All right, thank you. Sorry for the delay to all who are watching. We are now ready to go hopefully with audio and video. Welcome to the September 13th, 2021 regular meeting of Falls Church City Council. We are pleased you're able to join us this evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order and ask that the clerk read the meeting notice if she would.
Yes, sir. This meeting has been posted and is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting on our website, slash council meetings, excuse me, and on FCC TV, Cox Channel 11, RCN 2, Verizon 35, and on Falls Church Church's YouTube channel. Public comments were accepted virtually, and those who signed up will speak via the meeting platform. Anybody who wishes to speak on a public hearing item at a subsequent meeting should complete a speaker form at fallschurchva.gov-publiccomment before noon on the day of the council meeting. Written public comments, including those regarding public hearing items sent in advance of the meeting, are accepted at cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov, and these comments are sent to City Council daily and summarized and presented during the written comments agenda item.
All right, thank you very much. Will you now call roll, please?
Sure will. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Shans Hiscott? It's not quite made it, but she will be here. Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, and if you would all be so kind wherever you might be, and please join me, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, so let's move on to the receipt of public comment and City Council request. Madam Clerk, will you start with written comments?
Yes, we had one written comment that was sent to the mayor and provided to the entire City Council. Alisa Nguyen of 104 Lounsbury Place provided comments from the Churchview Homeowners Association regarding possible impacts on their neighborhood from the construction at the Broad and Washington project site. And that was all we had for written comments.
All right, let's move on to the receipt of public comment.
And tonight we have some friends from Welcoming Falls Church, Paul Bosson and Swati Ghosh, who are going to speak about the work that their group is doing.
All right, well, thank you very much. Welcome to Welcoming Falls Church. I know many of us were at your event yesterday evening, which is a wonderful, well-attended event. So we thank you for that and all the great work you're doing in our city and look forward to hearing more about what's to come. So I'll turn it all over to you guys.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Swati Ghosh of 120 Gresham Place, and I'm here on behalf of Welcoming Falls Church. We are a volunteer organization in the greater Falls Church area, and we strive to make our community more welcoming to immigrants and refugees. Our primary focus is engaging community members through service opportunities with community partners, awareness and dialogue through film screenings and other media, and policy and advocacy support to continue to build a more welcoming environment. As a professional in economic development and inclusion, an immigrant, and as a member of the Falls Church community, I commend and want to thank the entire City Council for the proclamation on Welcoming Week. This year, Welcoming Week is being celebrated in Falls Church City during September 10th to 19th in conjunction with Welcoming America. It will come as no surprise to you all that our little city's racial diversity has not changed much during the past 10 years, though there are changes happening all around us. In looking at the American Community Survey data between 2010 and 2019, our neighbors in Lake Barcroft, Idlewood, and Bailey's Crossroads, which together represent greater Falls Church, have become a lot more diverse racially and in ethnicity. Our organization fully supports Vision 2040 of Falls Church City to become a more diverse and welcoming community. And a key opportunity in front of us is to achieve that vision by supporting the resettlement of Afghan refugees in our region, which my colleague Paul Bosson will talk more about.
Yeah, thank you, Swati, and thank you to all of you for the opportunity to speak again on the occasion of Welcoming Week. This is the fourth time we've been with you for Welcoming Week, and we thank the city so much for your consistent and strong support of a welcoming spirit and of our organization over these years. I'd like to just say a couple of things. First, I'd like to extend an invitation, you know, to you all to join more of the events that we're organizing as we move through the rest of this Welcoming Week. Perhaps we'll see some of you at the FCEPTA fair tomorrow evening at Oak Street Elementary. Then our big events this weekend. Thank you for the opportunity to sponsor with the city an outdoor public screening of Raya and the Last Dragon at Sunset Cinema Friday evening at Cherry Hill Park. And beyond that, we want to make sure you understand that this is the first of a series, a film series we are calling Celebrating Community or Stories, as we kick this off this weekend. And we hope that this takes the community and the greater Falls Church community deeper, thinking about how stories are told across cultures. Film is a very powerful medium in our society. It's, and think about, think about Disney, you know, Disney is a fascinating enterprise in the way that they tell stories. We're so delighted that we're having a webinar on Saturday, the 18th with Walt Disney Animation Studios. The webinar will be moderated by our neighbor and friend and co-founder of Welcoming Falls Church, Christine Buckholz, with the producer and chief cultural advisor of Raya and the Last Dragon. This is intended to be a celebration of the cultures and peoples of Southeast Asia that inspired the film. And from a Disney perspective, they're especially excited by the prospecting of connecting with Falls Church's Eden Center community, the center of Vietnamese-American culture and commerce, right here inside the city limits. There will be much, much more to this film series, and we'll be in touch with you as it develops. And finally, I wrap up with a very short comment on a very important topic. The possibility, the potential, that our city might do something meaningful in the coming months and years, because this would be a long-term endeavor. This would be very local, but it could be very meaningful in our community's life as we all contemplate the increased flow of refugees to the United States that we're seeing in the past months. With reference to history and the largely successful resettlement of Southeast Asian refugees in the city and around the region in the 1970s and 1980s, perhaps we might think about how we could do something distinctive and meaningful as we think about the city, its identity, and our path to Falls Church 2040 vision of a welcoming and inclusive community. So more to come on that. We appreciate and really look forward to the dialogue with you about what that might mean as we, as we together, you know, work for a more welcoming and inclusive community. That's it. Thank you all so much for the welcome, and back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, thank you once again for all the great work you're doing here in the city. I know we're all very excited about it, so I look forward to the film this weekend and the various other events you all are sponsoring. Seems like year, year after year, it keeps getting bigger and better. So thanks again, and we look forward to further collaboration with you all. All right, let's move on. Do we have other public comment tonight, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
All right, so let's move on to the annual report of the Library Board of Trustees. All right, thank you all. Is Ms. Oppenheimer with us and maybe the others as well?
So I'm here. Can you all hear me?
We can, yes. Welcome.
Thank you. And Stephanie Oppenheimer is also joining us tonight as well. So, and she is our current board chair. So I'm just going to review some highlights of the annual report, and it does cover the fiscal year. So it goes from July 2020 to June 2021. I think Cindy, maybe you're driving the, what people can see on the screen. So I don't know if you want to move to the PDF that was attached? That has the graphics in it. There we go. So in FY21, we were working with dual challenges of being in a temporary location due to the construction that was happening on the library and also COVID restrictions. So during this time period, we put protections in place for staff. We engaged the public, and we also prepared for the opening of the new library. So for staff, we offered flexible schedules and had strict COVID protocols. I'm also proud to say that all of our permanent staff that started this journey with us, so everybody who moved the library into the temporary location, they are, they are all still with us, and they opened the library with us this past week. The library staff engaged the public through curbside service, virtual programming, and then, and regular newsletters and social media posts. The staff also worked on researching and implementing new software and updating policies and procedures during this time. We continue to work on equity, diversity, and inclusivity and social justice through revising our policies, implementing equitable changes to overdue fines and printing and copying costs. And we're also still doing diversity audits of the collection. So on the next page, it just highlights some of our stats. We, in the calendar year 2020, which was part of the fiscal year, we were named a four-star library. The four-star libraries or the star libraries are, usually the data they use is from two years prior. So they use the data from FY18 to compile the four-star libraries for 2020. We have appeared on this list for 12 years. So we are a well-used library, and I continue to, I expect this trend to continue as we have opened to the public in the newly renovated and expanded library. I also would like to take the opportunity to thank the residents of the City of Falls Church, City Council, and the Library Board, current and past members, the former director, Mary McMahon, and city staff who contributed to the success of the project. I extend my gratitude to library staff who worked tirelessly through all of the challenges that we had during the fiscal year 2021, and I am so proud of all of them. So that is the report, and I can give you a little bit of information about what has happened in the past week.
All right, sure. Why don't you quickly do that?
Sure. So as you know, we had our soft opening on Tuesday, September 7th, and that day we saw approximately 600 people come into the library. We capped off the week with the ribbon-cutting ceremony on Friday, September 10th, and it was a beautiful day that we were able to share with the public. And so just a quick snapshot of patron responses. I think it was the very first day I came out of my office, and I could hear a longtime patron singing as she went through the library into the bathroom. "The library is open, isn't it great?" I had another patron, a mom of two boys, who described those two boys sprinting down the sidewalk as if there was an amusement park at the corner to get to the library. And then finally, and it's the one that I will treasure the most, which was the expression of joy on Chet DeLong's face when he went into the library and when he came out from having his tour. He was just, he was just so joyful and so happy about the library project. So from Tuesday to Sunday, we had about 3,399 people. Saturday was our highest count with 1,120 people, and this is very similar to our pre-COVID numbers. Saturday, we also had 80 sign-ups for library cards, which is usually about a third of what we do in a month. So in one day, we did a third of what we normally do. In terms of checkouts, we compared actually 2019 to this, this particular week, so the week in 2019, because it was pre-COVID, and we actually saw almost a 19% increase in how many physical items were checked out. And on Saturday, we checked out over 1,500 items. So we're, we're, we're doing business as usual and keeping all of our COVID precautions in place.
All right, well, that's great to hear, and that library is beautiful. And it's just great to have it back open. I know everybody in the community is really excited about it, and that grand opening was a wonderful day, well orchestrated, and I think people are just so happy to see you all back open. I'm going to open up to my colleagues for questions or comments. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Jenny or for Stephanie? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Nice job on the library. It's beautiful, and we are glad to be there to celebrate with you all. Also, kudos for really leading and modeling on the equity front. I can appreciate kind of the continued focus in you all being one of the departments and city staff that's really modeling the behavior we want to see. A question about curbside, is that here to stay? Because I know that was really a nice service and it could actually be helpful for residents even when we're on the other side of COVID.
We are continuing curbside at this moment, so Monday through Friday, 12 to 4.
Great. Do we have spaces in front of the library to facilitate that? So is it like a quick turnover space?
They have yet to be signed, but they will be on Park, sorry, North Virginia Avenue side.
Terrific. Thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor Conley?
Jenny, I just want to say congratulations and thanks to you and to the Library Board and the Library Staff for the work that you've done. I know it's got to be really rewarding to do this, this fiscal year's report and be able to say that you opened the library. So congratulations on that front, and I also heard many, many happy people in the times that I've been there, just giggling and excited to be able to be there and see books and adults and children and everyone. So thank you for that. And we, I'm looking forward to how you're planning to expand programs in the coming year, reading programs and presentations for kids and adults and to make use of all that great space. So we're looking forward to the FY22 presentation. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah, Jenny, I just want to take a minute. I know I told you this at the ribbon-cutting, but fantastic job on the library. It looks amazing. I can understand why Chet is so delighted. You guys have just done a great job. It looks wonderful. And my seventh grader today begged me to take her to the library so she could sit up there for just 45 minutes as opposed to reading in a room, trying to squeeze it in between getting back from school and going to lacrosse practice. And that's a first for us. They love the library, but they seem to be falling over themselves to spend every minute that they can. So well done. It's beautiful. Congratulations to you guys and the Library Board for just a really spectacular building. So very, very, very happy for you guys and for the community.
Thank you.
All right, all right, Ms. Hiscott?
At risk of echoing sentiments of my colleagues, I actually want to congratulate you and Stephanie and everyone who's worked on this before and during the process. And just add a couple anecdotes from today. I heard more than one person tell me they'd already gotten their books from the library on Friday, read them over the weekend, and were looking forward to coming back. So that's high praise that it's been, it's been that missed. And so thank you to all of your work and to that of staff who've been working on it.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Thanks to Stephanie particularly for your comments, recognizing Brad Grenand and Chet DeLong, your predecessors as Library Board Chairs, for their role in the project. And also special thanks to Claudia on your staff for Jenny for giving Chet the behind-the-scenes tour of the whole building. He did, as you said, really, really very much enjoy it. So thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, great work. I have a question for staff. The city lead said that we came in on or under budget, and I wondered if the staff could say anything about that. I certainly second everything that everybody said about the wonderful product.
So we are on budget. We're scheduled to be on budget. We have not finished the closeout project, the closeout process. So I don't have final numbers on that. Lionel is still working on that, and we're still working on taking care of a couple of other outstanding items. So I think we will be scheduling a follow-up with council in October.
Okay, but right now it looks like you're on budget. If not better. Thank you. If you can be better.
It's not better.
Better is better. Anyway, thank you very much. It was a great event and a wonderful product. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, well, it doesn't look like there are any more questions, but once again, I'll thank you for getting us through COVID and keeping us reading and back, opening that wonderful library back up. So I know we all look forward to spending more time there, but thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter and council members.
All right, let's move on now to the report of the Stormwater Task Force. I don't know who's here.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. This is Hans Miller.
Yeah, hello. Welcome.
Thank you. So I was one of the members of the Stormwater Task Force. And so tonight I was going to, you got briefed in April about our recommendations, and tonight I'm going to brief you on some of the memos that you requested from the Stormwater Task Force.
All right.
So thank you for the opportunity, and also thanks upfront to your staff for all the support of the Stormwater Task Force as it went through our project. We're appreciative of the interest in the stormwater since the July 19 storm, and tonight I'm going to talk about the standing board and the fee memos that you asked us to work on. So we understand you should have gotten copies of those. So hopefully what I'm saying is it's not new, but I'm going to hit the highlights of those. So overall, our guiding objectives when we look at stormwater is, instead of just thinking about stormwater as pipes, we should think about it as a system. And there are these three guiding objectives we're looking at. One is increasing green infrastructure when able, improving downstream drainage, and reducing the flow near the main watershed. And two guiding items with those are looking at supporting those objectives through projects, but also policy and community activity on a regular basis, because the watersheds are really all part of a system, and we need to think about it as the entire watershed and not just singular efforts or projects. So highlight the two memos that you requested us to look at. One was the standing board, which was creating a list of suggestions and tasks for a direct board to help direct the future of the stormwater management. And the other one was looking at the stormwater rate and thus providing options and structure of stormwater rates to ensure equity in sharing the cost burden of the stormwater program as a whole. So I'm going to start with the board. Yeah, you have that up. So we put advisory board and commission. Whether, we had some debate about this in discussion, but whether it's called an advisory board or commission based on legal definitions of that, we said, felt that was up to the discretion of the council. But our bottom line recommendation is we do recommend a standing board. The context here is that there has been, had been a previous public utilities commission, which was retired when we sold off water system, and there was a little oversight the past eight years. So you appointed this temporary task force, and we carried out the, and then we see they needs to carry out the functions of a more permanent board. We recommend a two-year term for board members with the idea that that's initially staggered on one to three years, so you don't have the whole board turn over at once. We see this as initial level of citizen review and input. It's not a, we don't see it as a decision or regulation body, but really an opportunity for citizens to provide their input to you. And we see it as being able to liaise with other commissioners. And as you see on the scope of work that you're scrolling through there, we see it as an input on stormwater fee changes and other revenue sources. And I think that's important to look at the scope of how we support this. Reviewing project priorities. There might be circumstances that change the priorities that we, our current task force came up with, as well as monitoring the project implementation as staff and council do turn over. And so we need to periodically review those projects and where they are. Also providing feedback on policy and changes to code as well as reviewing development projects and impacts for stormwater consideration. At the bottom, there were additional scope opportunities, and we see that as things of educational outreach. So there are some things like Resource Protection Agency areas that affect many residents that they may, just may not be aware of, as well as personal or individual items that families can do to improve stormwater and drainage. There's also interaction with boards and commissions and other jurisdictions to learn about maybe some other best practices we may be able to adopt. Are there any questions about the advisory board or commission before I move on to the utility fee?
All right, I think keep going.
All right. So the stormwater tillage fee, overall, the infrastructure is aging. Needs to be replaced and updated over time, and it's something that should be done through a well-planned and systematic program. The bottom line upfront is the current revenue for stormwater does not cover the original intent of the fund when it was set up in 2012. And those three items were really about improving water quality, a maintenance of a 60-year annual system, and addressing flood mitigation needs. So the current fund does not really cover new projects. And as you know, and appreciate the city going after and looking at some of those initial projects that we identified after the July 19 flood, but it does require debt financing at this point. Another finding is that our stormwater is, fund is independent. There are reasons for that from some balance of equity, but the point is that it does cover projects and staff. So it is very different from other jurisdictions. So if we compare the stormwater fee in Falls Church to other jurisdictions, it's not a direct comparison. And because our fund does cover staff and administrative costs, currently only $200,000 of the 1.6 million that goes toward the stormwater fund covers projects. Another reality is the majority of our current system was installed before the 1960s, and that was based on a 2012 assessment. Another thing that came out of the 2012 memo to the City Council at that time was that replacement cost, if you were to replace the entire system, is $68 million. When we talked to your city staff, they said that the, a rough measure is about $1 million per year for capital improvements. It's not that that is every year, but it is something that if we don't start chipping away at it or planning for it, there will be a big bill to pay at some point. Another, another important factor is that there, we noticed a lack of incentives to curb the growth of impervious area. So impervious area being if I have paved surfaces or concrete. What happens with that is it really accelerates the flow. And flow volume, but more importantly, rate, is one of the primary causes of damage and safety. So anything we can do to capture or slow down the rate is really important. And so whatever we can do to incentivize maintaining or curbing the growth of impervious areas is very important. And the other key point is that the entire city is part of the watershed. And actually, those places where you're at the high ground are actually some of the most important places to pay attention to, because that's where that rate and volume starts, and it's the accumulation of that that causes problems downstream. One note is we did explore the idea of a progressive fee system in terms of the stormwater fee. But based on how the billing process is done, it was determined, or ran different models, it was determined that it did not raise sufficient funds to offset the cost of just managing the billing process. So we did not have that as a recommendation. So now I'll go on to the main recommendations that you have listed there, and I'll just hit some of the highlights here. One is adjust, adjust the fee annually with inflation. So one of the problems we had was, when we started the fund, it did have enough to cover some projects, but since it was basically frozen in time, as inflation increased, the actual effectiveness of the fund decreased in terms of project and ability to fund the projects. Increase, we also see the need to increase the billable unit rate to offset those relative losses due to inflation over time and the projected cost of regular updates to the infrastructure that will be coming due. We also think the City Council should consider a fee schedule with permitting for new construction. And the idea here is that if we can look at ways to incentivize new homers, we can't regulate the size of a property, but if we have some incentives from a stormwater fee perspective to mediate the increase of the growth, that is one thing we should consider. Another thing I recently learned about from a presentation from Arlington was that they would provide an offset. So if somebody was applying, let's say somebody was bringing a small house down and building a large house in its place, they would stay, as part of the permit, that they had to provide some offset. So if they grew the impervious area by a certain amount, they had to build some capture basin or some other mechanism to offset that loss of impervious area. So that's another option. We should also consider positive incentives to encourage more green infrastructure and private efforts. I know we've had some, some funds like that in the past, but part of the standing board would be to I know we've had some, some funds like that in the past, but part of the standing board would be to help advise the council on other activities or incentives we might be able to do to help individual citizens. And again, if we think about stormwater as a system, every action by individuals on their individual lots can make quite a difference when we look at the aggregate. Apply, I think there is really about looking at how we might apply for state and funding sources at each opportunity. So your staff is very well aware of that. They briefed us on different state and federal sources, but those do have specific timelines. So we want to make sure we are teeing up our projects to meet those timelines and possibly adjusting some of the definitions of the project to fit state and federal funding guidelines. Another one is revisit, and we think we should revisit, rework ordinance to look at stormwater objectives and incentives in mind. And as a final thing, overall, again, the watersheds are a system. We are all a part of it. What we've learned through the process, the Stormwater Task Force, is that the reality is that there are going to be challenges to the stormwater system. And even though something says a 10-year flood, the reality is that it isn't 10 years. And we think the city should set a goal that at a minimum, we should be able to, every citizen in the community should be able to not be flooded when we have a 10-year flood. And that's defined by a certain amount of rain in a certain amount of period. And we can reach that goal by looking across those broad objectives of green infrastructure, downstream drainage, and reducing the flow and volume near the main watershed. So thank you again for this opportunity. And it's been a learning experience for all the folks on the Stormwater Task Force, and welcome any questions at this time.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I know it's very dense, a lot of this work and analysis. And it's critically important to our whole community, but especially those that have had regular flooding, which is just catastrophic. So we really appreciate your efforts. I imagine there's some questions. I know there are because I'm looking at the first hand that's raised, which is Letty Hardy. Letty?
Thank you. Thank you, Hans and Rolf Anderson and Dave Gustafson, I think also joined us and the rest of the Stormwater Task Force. As always, I am always impressed with the thoroughness and soundness of recommendations. So really appreciate the hard work from the task force. First question is around, I think recommendation number three within the fee structure recommendations. So kind of something around the lines of kind of when you have new construction, how do you offset the impact of that new impervious surface that you've created? I guess my question to the city attorney is, do we have authority to do more? Because that feels like an area of large potential. Because I think I remember planning telling the state a point that we probably disturb more land and residential redevelopment per year than commercial. And so if we can actually put a lot more attention on that, that feels like a big area of opportunity, either a impact fee of some kind or requiring more stringent capture requirements, that sort of thing. So maybe comment from city staff on what we can do around that. I don't know if Zach or Wyatt or someone else is on the call, or maybe Carol, if we have legal authority to do such a thing.
I would have to look specifically. I think there probably is a little bit of room to do some more things, but we'll have to look at what they are. And I can work with staff on doing that and get back to you all.
Terrific. Yeah. So that one just jumped out as me as something that seems to have opportunity for us. So I appreciate you guys flagging that. Next question is really around kind of incentives. How do we continue encouraging, encourage good behavior? My understanding is we do have a program in place where we give out credits. So if you put in a rain barrel, we'll give you some sort of credit back on your stormwater fee. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Do we use up kind of all available budget? So do people know about? I guess it's kind of where I'm getting to.
Let me ask if Zach or Mr. Bradley or Mr. Dudley would like to answer that question?
Yeah, I can take that, Mr. Shields. So the program is known about throughout the city. We do get fairly regular inquiries from various different residents trying to take advantage of it. It's not widely used outside of maybe some rain barrels that Vipas will distribute, primarily because it does get quite costly to implement several of the strategies that are eligible. Some rain barrels are relatively inexpensive, cheap to install. But if you're looking at doing some kind of rain garden, you know, there's quite a bit of cost involved with that. Most of the inquiries we get relate to the removal of impervious and when are they going to see that on their fee? Since the third row fee comes down. That's primarily what we see.
Do we think there's an opportunity to make it more attractive of a program so more people do those things?
There's always a possibility. I, I can't speak a whole lot to it. It's a little out of my wheelhouse speaking to the specifics of that. So I don't know if Tony, if he's with us tonight, Mr. Dudley, if he could jump in and speak that a little bit more.
Yes, we could, of course, look into more promotion as far as the, that is concerned. Right now, we're looking at about $17,000 a year in credit. That's based on a July number that we had during the process of the utility fee rate conversation. So there's certainly, there's certainly place for, for more credit. And, but we just have to make sure that the techniques used are eligible under the state format as well as effective in the area that they're being used.
Yep. Yeah. Because ultimately, I think there's power in a lot of collective local efforts if every homeowner pitched in and did more to minimize impervious surface and capture more rainwater that could help across the city. And so I'd be interested in, you know, whether we can continue encouraging that, especially if uptake of the current program isn't high. And then my last question is really around, I think the main message I'm hearing from Hans and others is that they're concerned that the stormwater fee won't be enough to cover maintenance going forward. So question partially for Cindy and Wyatt is I know that we're looking at using our ARPA dollars to pay for hopefully a large part of the new six priority projects. Is it possible to also use those ARPA dollars to create some sort of endowment to pay for the maintenance of those projects? So we're not just building the new stuff and then have to increase taxes on our homeowners, but also some sort of ongoing program to keep it going to.
Mr. Shields, would you like me to respond?
Go ahead, Cindy.
Great thing. I'm going to start with the second one first. The endowment piece is not permitted under the ARPA because you need to provide direct benefit now in response to COVID. And also the funds have to be expended by December 31, 2024. So there's a conflict with that concept. On the larger question of how we can use ARPA, stormwater is clearly deemed as an eligible infrastructure project under ARPA, but there are some requirements associated to that. And so Mr. Bradley, Mr. Dudley have been helping us do a deeper dive on that because most of the federal regulations for ARPA are referring back to two EPA programs for clean drinking water and clean water, and specifically calling out for quality benefits versus quantity. And a lot of the projects that in our CIP and that the Stormwater Task Force prioritized are of course trying to address the quantity issue with the flooding in the downstream. So we have a request into U.S. Treasury as well as working with GFOA government finance officers to see a little more definitive definition of that, how much quality has to be part. And we've got some good descriptions from Mr. Dudley, how addressing quantity and reducing sediment running downstream is a quality improvement, but it's a matter of getting it interpreted as consistent with the EPA program. So I wanted to provide that because we are certainly looking for this ARPA money for our current stormwater projects. But we've got some regulation nuances we've got to sort through to make sure the projects we're proposing are compliant to the eligibility and also can be timed and completed per the federal regulations. Some more to come on that.
Okay, we'll stay tuned. Thank you. That's it for now.
All right, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. So terrific work by the task force as always. My question is, so we have a $68 million capital problem, as I understand it. That's how much it would cost to replace the infrastructure we have. And as a member of a council, which has tackled all of our other capital needs ambitiously and done great work on them, I think. I would hope that this council will get the ball rolling to tackle the next big challenge, which I guess is this $68 million effort that we need to undertake. So I guess my question will be, is there going to be developed a plan as part of next year's budget to undertake whatever effort that's required to spend as much of the ARPA money as we possibly can to take on the $68 million figure in the near term? Rather than trying to figure out how we're going to do over the next 30 years, I'd like to see us have a plan where we do it in the next 10 or 15 years. So I guess that's a question about process as much as anything. And if, before that gets addressed, I could just observe. The question of impervious surface is one I'd like to understand better. The, you know, new development that we've done typically has a feature of replacing a lot of impervious surface. Maybe there's some scrub trees or occasional patches of vegetation. But basically, we are involved in a kind of an offset activity. Whereas we build a new structure with a more impervious surface, but with management practices built into it that actually reduce the volume and improve the quality of the stormwater runoff. So if we're going to measure ourselves against the impervious surface yardstick, I would just like for us to appreciate that not all impervious surfaces created equal. That in the newer developments, if they're designed right, big, middle, and small, service doesn't necessarily mean that water quality and water quantity performance is managed. In fact, it's quite the opposite. So an understanding of that and an appreciation of that. And finally, just one of the remarks and the suggestion to stand up a commission board, whatever we're going to call it, which is a good idea, is that it would review all large new development projects. I would say, as Ms. Hardy suggested, review all development projects. And Falls Church, every project is large, I suppose, but you know, some are larger than others. And I would like to see us look at the smaller infill, both commercial and residential from the stormwater performance lens and big projects. Thanks.
All right, Hans, did you have a response to that?
I did. I just wanted to support the comment that was made. So I did talk to Paul Starter of the Planning Commission. He did mention, for example, Founder's Row as part of that, you did have them do capture area. So even though it's the same amount of impervious area, that development is capturing more of the flow that's hitting the ceiling, the roof. So in effect, it's actually helping to slow down some of the rate and water flow that's coming out of there. So that's an, that's an example, I think of an opportunity with a development. One of the data points I did learn from Arlington's brief to the Planning Commission on the 1st of September, and I think it's similar to us, is that 54% of the increase in impervious area was actually in residential properties. So the aggregate of small homes becoming large homes, that growth in aggregate is actually causing the greatest growth in impervious surface. So where we can look at either how to incentivize or offset those changes across residential properties can actually have a significant effect over.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thanks, Dave. Hans, thank you guys for, for the detailed work. I don't think I could say any better than my colleagues have said. You guys just do, it's just an immense amount of detail and thorough research. So I appreciate it. We all appreciate it. It's these types of task force and committees that, you know, help make our jobs easier and frankly, help us cut right to the chase. So thank you. Wyatt, what is the, what is the annual maintenance cost to run the system right now, not including replacement of existing pipes and anything else that is capital intensive?
So the operating budget is about $850,000. That's what, that's what we spend on DPW, operations staff going out to clean the system, repair the system, kind of the nuts and bolts of managing the system. And then the next relevant number is about $250,000 a year in debt service for capital investments we've made in the past five years.
Okay. And how much do we collect a year in stormwater fees right now?
1.7 million.
Okay. So we are building up a bit of a reserve, obviously unless we continue to have to replace pipe. Okay.
I would, so the part that I left out is $600,000 goes for management, and that's important. But you know, a lot of that is the federal mandates that were referenced in the report by the Stormwater Task Force and administering of the fee, et cetera, et cetera. So that's another piece, important piece of it. So we are not actually in a posture right now of, of sort of in a structural way, building up reserves.
Man, that gives me heartburn. $600,000 in management. So effectively, one third of our total fees collected. I want to dig into that later, but we're not going to dig into that right now because I have a couple more questions. And Hans, remind me again, what's the total cost of our big six projects?
I don't, I don't have the total cost right in front of me. I guess I'll do a shout out to.
About $8 million.
Eight?
Yes, eight.
Thanks, Zach. I think that was Zach. So a couple of things here. And I don't think we need to dig into all this tonight because I think we've still got some homework to do. You know, I, I think feel the same way, and I certainly have for, for quite some time. I am, I strongly advocate that we consider using a substantial amount of our ARPA funding to solve for this particular problem. Obviously, we can't solve for all of it. We can certainly knock out these big six projects and make some serious headway into replacing some of the pipes that we know need to be replaced. And frankly, the Stormwater Task Force has done a phenomenal job, along with city staff, in putting together, you know, a strategic action plan so we can actually go out, we know what we need to do, where we need to spend it, what those projects are and how they've been prioritized. And so this is kind of like locked and ready to go. And so I strongly advocate that we use that ARPA money. And frankly, and we're going to get into this when we talk about ARPA allocation in the next, in the next council agenda item. But this is a perfect example of what is considered smart fiscal policy. We have a bucket of money that we were given that we can legally spend on an investment that is actually going to cut costs for us in the future and allow us to mitigate tax increases on our citizens. While you look at some of the ARP allocations that are being recommended at our next agenda item, and we're talking about funding programs that are actually going to increase our carrying costs into the future, whether it's hiring new people, starting new programs. This is a perfect example of, of a smart fiscal investment to use these ARPA funds to make an investment in the city, to solve for a problem, but also, again, to mitigate what I think we're all coming to a stark realization of that we're going to have to increase stormwater fees if we don't find another solution. So I think that, you know, all of us on council need to think very, very carefully about, you know, how we, I guess, stop the hemorrhaging of, of an $18 million pot of money and think about where it can best be used. And this is, for me, I think this is, this should be our top target. Carol, what is our legal authority to require things like cisterns and stormwater retention for new residential construction?
As long as they're addressing the needs of that property, there's probably a way to do it. I would want to look into the specifics. But I think we have some opportunity to do that. But we would need to, as I said, make sure it ties to the runoff generated by that property.
Yeah, okay. So I, I mean, I get the need to look at this, you know, the carrot as well as the stick. And the carrot piece, the tax credits we have in place, I'll tell you frankly, we did a renovation in our house and we had to manage stormwater runoff because we had flooding in our basement. And we looked at the tax credits that were available for, for green infrastructure, and it wasn't even worth the time to fill out the paperwork. So we spent thousands of dollars building rain gardens, removing pervious surface. And so we've got to do something to improve the benefit of the carrot aspect of what we do. But going back to kind of the stick aspect, I am certainly pro renovation of homes and people making investment in their homes. However, based on the current zoning, and this is going back to the notion that I think we, again, we've all come to the realization, and I think it's widely known, that most of our problems are coming from residential development, new construction, replacing smaller homes with larger homes, you know, larger driveways, patios, impervious surface. And again, I'm not anti-residential development, but based on our, if you, if you just look at this holistically, it's a bit maddening because based on current zoning, based on setbacks, density allowances, tree canopy requirements inside of our residential zoning ordinance, inside of our residential zoning ordinance, as it relates to new home development, you know, we're on the one hand, you know, looking to tax all of our citizens regularly to solve for a problem created by that zoning. And on the other hand, you know, we're allowing it to proliferate. And we're sitting here talking about raising taxes to manage a problem that based on the current zoning and what's allowed in residential development is going to continue to be a bigger problem. And so I for one cannot contemplate or stomach the idea of raising stormwater fees without a solution to deal with this in the long run. And we talked about this ad nauseam as part of the stormwater recommendations when we were looking at spending money on these big six. And it's like, well, you know, we can, we can improve capacity and volume and throughput. But if we're not solving the problem upstream, then we're really not solving the problem altogether. And so I'm going to passionately plead with my fellow council members that before we start to get on this path of raising rates to solve for the problem and packaging up ARPA funds and distributing it, you know, in 5% here, 10% there, that we take a step back, come up with a holistic solution and then think very, very hard about giving us the shot in the arm that we need to take on these big six coming out of ARPA funds. And then coming up with a solution, both from a stick and a carrot perspective, to incentivize folks to create more stormwater retention, detention on site and make these investments. You know, as we can, again, you continue to see this proliferation of residential redevelopment throughout the city, which is causing most of the problem. And I will point out, it's been touched on this, and we're about to get a presentation from one of our commercial developers. But we already require this detention and retention and these stormwater improvements for commercial. And that's just a drop in the bucket in terms of the developments taking, that's taking place in the city. And so we need to make these same requirements for large scale, single family residential development as well. Otherwise, we are just throwing good money after bad, and that is just not smart fiscal policy. So I would ask that we think about this holistically before we start running down the path of putting together advanced rate schedules to pay for a problem that we're really not solving for, we're just kind of adding money or throwing gas onto, onto a fire, not really solving the problem upstream. So again, a passionate plea for all of us to think holistically before we start taxing our citizens without actually really solving the problem. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Just two quick things. First, I totally support the very robust use of ARPA funds for stormwater capital projects as permitted. And secondly, I wonder if the task force could provide me any suggestions they have for regional coordination and regional approaches. And I'd be very pleased to take that to the Council of Governments Board or whatever other group might be a good group to bring that to in terms of some regional coordination in in addressing the underlying causes of runoff and improving our overall stormwater system. So if you all have any recommendations along that line, please let me know. I'd be very interested in that. And thank you for your work.
Thank, thank you. I might, I might call in Rolf and Dave to back me up here. The regional question is a very good one, obviously, because both Fairfax and Arlington feed into Trips Run. So Trips Run is two thirds of our watershed and Four Mile Run is one third. As we looked at projects, for example, one of the projects on Hillwood involved coordination with Fairfax in terms of what we want to do. So there is necessary coordination with the jurisdiction, just in terms of projects we do. But I think more importantly, it is how do we collectively look at the system of the watershed? So if we look at the watersheds and how things feed in, how might we collectively look at that? And I, to the question to our legal about team about offsets, that's where I think collaboration could be as well. Because if it's legally available to be done in one council, we should be able to just adopt their practices if it's feasible to do. And that's, you know, what I learned from Arlington on the first of September is they do have those processes and those programs in place. So I think best practices, specifically with residential properties and how we incentivize residential properties to curb the increase in pervious areas is probably one of the most important areas to look at because that looks at the aggregate of the watershed. The other place for coordination, and we've already done this, is with the O N D Trail. So one of the big projects we have is working with the O N D Trail. And so when we look at opportunities, if there is a situation where it's kind of like, you know, doing a clutch job on your car, right? If you're dropping the engine to look, fix an oil change, you can get the clutch done at the same time, right? Well, if you're digging up the street and you've got access to the pipes, let's see where we can take advantage of those opportunities. So I'm going to pass over to Ralph and Dave, see if you have any other comments regarding regional.
Not really. I think you hit it pretty well there. Oh, sorry, I put it in my, pretty well, Hans. Just, we certainly have learned that there's a lot of opportunity to learn from what Arlington, Fairfax, the regional group are doing. Apply their lessons learned and then, and to certain extent also, although it was difficult, when do we need to collaborate with them? Because so many of our issues are cross, cross boundary, as Hans gave the example of the O N D Trail. But you know, our water flows into Fairfax, so theirs flows into ours, or ours goes into Arlington. So yeah, collaboration is certainly essential. Dave, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, just one quick note to add. I know in the 2012 Watershed Management Plan, there was a kind of startling statistic in there that said that the city had an effective impervious surface area of over 40%, which is not good for many reasons. And I haven't seen an updated number on that. I think to Councilman Snyder's point, that would be a fantastic thing to track at a regional level to find out what the effective impervious area is of our, of our area. Because we all know that water doesn't necessarily respect boundaries. And so, yeah, I would love to see that. I know that's something that we've recommended that, that staff and whatever future stormwater board keep an eye on that amount of impervious area because we all know there's, there's plenty of area left in the city that, that will be redeveloped in the, in the not too distant future. So whatever we could do to put the right incentives in place to make sure that that we leave those residential properties in better shape than, than we found them. As has happened with some of the larger commercial properties in recent years would be a big benefit to everybody downstream. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hiscott?
Thanks, Dave, and thanks again to the stormwater folks who've done such incredible job putting this together. I agree with both my colleagues, Mr. Snyder and Lichtenhouse, on focusing our ARPA funds on stormwater as well. I just wanted to bring up what my, the ESC committee has also shared with me over time. I think we've talked about this briefly before, but the intensity, duration, frequency curves that are used to define a 10-year storm have been recently updated or are in the process of being recently updated. And what we've used to define our 10-year storm and to define the stormwater projects that we are already doing is already falling behind. And basically what was done for a 10-year storm is now a six-year storm. So in addition to, you know, having all of these projects and being tied into the system and having all these additional goals, the bar keeps moving in terms of climate change and our concerns with the way we're looking at 10-year flood has changed significantly and we have some of the science behind that. So I think we need to consider using those numbers moving forward for more development as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
This is, excuse me, this is Ellen Heether, also a member of the task force. Do I, can I jump in real quick?
Of course.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to add on to the, sorry, I'm trying, there we go. The conversation about the community cross-jurisdictional. And I do also think that there is an opportunity with FEMA to help us with that cross-jurisdictional because I believe that there's probably some community outreach person in FEMA that can work with not just the city, but like the task force and get, it's a bigger issue. And it's, it's this middle ground. So trying to get somebody from FEMA to work in between us and help us understand, I think that there's opportunity there. I'm not sure. I do have an in. My son is now working for FEMA and I keep pushing him on this. And what, there's got to be somebody that can help us at the citizenry level to kind of help brand, stand this together.
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. I'm also been involved with the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, which is also actually coordinating efforts on this behalf as well. I see another hand up. I'm trying to identify whose hand that is. Looks like Ralph. Was that you with the hand up as well?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to what Mr. Lichtenhouse had to say. And it was incredibly frustrating oftentimes as we were doing our work because it does seem like a lot of the zoning and code requirements kind of tied our hands. Oh, you can't do that. You can't do this. So that's why we, we made that particular recommendation that, you know, we also are totally pro development and want people to approve their homes. But in making any changes that they like, but, but the fact of the matter is, a lot of the redevelopment that's occurring, whether it's larger homes or pipe stems or two homes in one parcel are, are putting a heavy burden on the stormwater system and putting a lot more water into, into the, into the storms and knocking into the shores and not getting absorbed into the nearby land. So I just want to kind of reemphasize that his point on zoning is quite an important one that, and that that's where maybe we would put some incentives or disincentives, whether it's fees or, although it's hard, you know, our problem with a fee is if it's a hundred dollar fee, it's, you know, not a disincentive, right? I mean, so, or the goal really should be that you need to compensate the city for the additional burden that you put onto the system in a way, or, or find a way to mitigate your, the, the the burden that you're putting on the stormwater system. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we should probably start to try to wind this conversation down as we have a very heavy agenda tonight. Ms. Hardy?
Yeah, just on that point, to make sure that there is kind of a clear takeaway, because I think I heard consensus that that's definitely something that council is interested in focusing on is how do we make sure that residential redevelopment? You know, what authority do we have to better regulate that to minimize the impact and that everyone pays their share if they're causing more impact to the stormwater system? So on that point, I guess, Wyatt, is there a takeaway on kind of how we can run that down? Whether it's with Carol on kind of our legal authority or kind of doing some research on how much further can we push on that?
Yes, as Carol noted, I think it's a big topic. It's a complex topic. I think we need to get back with council on that. Rather than sort of speaking ad hoc on what we can and we can't do. So at the mayor's meeting, if we could just schedule, and we do need to bring planning staff into that discussion as well. Generally zoning is in the, in the province of our planning staff. And so DPW and planning can work very closely together on this.
All right. Thank you. Unless there are any other
Okay, that sounds like a good segue.
Unless, unless there are any other further comments, why don't we go ahead and thank our colleagues on the task force for all their great work and look forward to spending more time with you going forward. So thank you so much. And let's move on now to council requests. Are there any council requests? And while we're waiting on some, I'll just note what a great fall festival we had this year. Well attended, lots of great restaurants, lots of great food. And then the run for the schools was also wonderfully organized. We can thank our own Debbie Hiscott. And I'm not sure, but I think I may have won the race. I'm still waiting for notification, but it was a fun, fun run and a great run.
You're the first place in the mayor category.
Okay, good. Okay. I thought I secured that. But anyway, let's move on to council requests. Mr. Duncan, what you got?
I'm pretty sure I won my age bracket and council members who walked the one mile court. Actually, I'm not sure I did because I think Snyder was ahead of me, so. I just wondered if we had any data, congratulations, Dave Snyder. I just wondered if we had any data about the, the business that was done at the vaccine stand at the Fall Festival. And going forward, I wonder when our next opportunity might be to have another public vaccinating opportunity in the city of Falls Church, maybe coordinated with the health department. And as we go back to in-building meetings, I wonder if we could get a regular update about where we are since the pandemic goes on in terms of our vaccine count. And try to come up with a number that's reflective of the total, you know, population that's eligible to be vaccinated and how we're doing. I heard we're doing quite well among the younger set, which is good news. At any rate, if we could have next week, starting those numbers, I think that'd be helpful.
We can certainly bring those to your work session next week. For the Fall Festival event, we had 98 individuals pre-registered for that vaccination clinic. Net of cancellations and walk-ins, I think the word we've gotten is it was over 100 vaccinations at the Fall Festival. So thank you to all the people who worked that clinic and for our partnership with Fairfax Health on that.
Great. Good number. Thanks.
Ms. Hiscott?
On the vaccination topic, I heard this evening from school staff that of the Falls Church City Public School staff, we are at a 98.5% vaccination rate. So fewer than eight people, eight staff members, that's across all, you know, teachers, bus drivers, everybody else. Do we know what the equivalent rate is for staff from the city side?
We do not at this time. We are, we do have a, a requirement for city staff to either have the vaccination by September 30th or have regular testing on a weekly basis. So by September 30th, we will have good data that is relevant to your question.
Okay, great. And then the other follow-up was from a mayor's meeting conversation about noise ordinances and, or noise ordinance and generators and what, I just wondered if we'd had any update on what our noise ordinance covers or doesn't cover with regard to emergency generator testing and usage?
So with our noise ordinance, residential emergency generators are exempt from the noise ordinance. And, and so I will check after this meeting to make sure we have communicated with an individual contacted us on that. I believe we have, but if we have not, we will be sure to do so no later than tomorrow morning.
Okay, so if residents calling for a noise ordinance complaint, we will not be sending police out any longer to check on noise readings from an emergency generator at residences?
Yes, that, that discussion we have had with the police. And so I think our understanding is that there might have been a sort of an attempt to, you know, as a courtesy or as a service to try to address the complainant's concern, but it was not an enforcement action.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's it for me right now.
All right. Thank you. And unless there are any other council requests, we're going to go ahead and move on to the report of the city manager. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Charter, and members of council. If I may turn over the manager's report to Dana Lewis, who will provide a briefing to the city council on the acquisition of two affordable housing properties in the Virginia Village area. And, and our conceptual ideas for an application for an Amazon Reach grant, which would be our second grant application. So Ms. Lewis is on the call, I believe, and I wonder if she might be able to turn on her mic and give that report.
Hello, everyone, council members. So I just wanted to give you an update. So regarding our Virginia Village purchase, 310 and 312. So the city owns one of the quads in the Virginia Village subdivision. And the City of Falls Church Economic Development Authority owns three of the quads, including the two newest purchases, which are 310 and 312. One of the EDA quads was financed wholly with the EDA land banking fund. And the other two were financed out of the city's reserve fund. So I'm just giving you an update on where we are with those two properties and everything we've done. We have the management contract set up with Promax. They are now managing all four properties at an 8% fee. We've given notifications and all the tenants have done applications and we have received them all. Based on what we received, all of the incomes at all four properties are below 60%. are below 60% AMI and all are rent burdened. Utilities and insurance have been set up for both the new properties. Inspections have been completed on all four properties. And when we met with Virginia Housing about the inspections that were done, they estimate that probably it's about $50,000 per property of rehab that's needed because of the age of the properties and needs to be done. As vacancies occur, we will pull from the ADU certified renters list because the rents are about the same. And as far as repayment in the future, we are targeting to refinance the 2.8 million for cash back to the EDA and the city respectively for four quads. And so some of the ways we're looking to do that, we are going to apply for the Virginia Housing Community Impact Grant. And this grant will help us to cover the cost of rehab. So it'll pay for things like a general contractor, architect, structural engineer, plumber, electrician, that type of thing. They have similar grants with Virginia Housing and Community Development. We plan to apply to them CDBG funding. So somebody's talking.
I'm going to walk meeting in there. You can go in there.
So whoever may not be muted, I don't know if that's from your house, Dana, but if it's not, whoever else. Okay, well, if you could mute your microphones if you're not speaking, that might be helpful. Anyway, my apologies, Ms. Lewis.
No worries. And then in the future, so we have $77,000 from CDBG funding from Fairfax County for FY22. So that is a source of future funding that we might be able to use for rehab costs in the future. So that's something we're looking at for FY23. And then we have an environmental energy audit. And this is the way for us to keep those energy costs down. We actually started the energy audit today with our environmental programs coordinator, Kate Walker, as the staff lead. And so there's grant funds available that will help with the energy costs at all four properties. So we're looking at that. And then the biggest source of funding is the Amazon Grant HQ2 Year 35 Grant. And so the goal for us to apply for this grant is the long term preservation of the total 80 existing market aging affordable. We want to make them all committed. And there are 64 units remaining to acquire. So the grant is very competitive. There's 3.75 million available. And what we're looking to do is to set up an acquisition strike fund that has cash to start to strike quickly with a non-contingent contract. So it will be a lot easier than what we've done this past year. The plan would also provide for a permanent financing takeout to replenish a revolving fund as well as a construction cash flow for rehab to be combined with the permanent financing. And the grant this year is year three through five grant funding is very competitive, not like our year two Amazon grant. So we're going to have a lot more folks to compete with. So city staff, we met with Virginia Housing. We told them all about the grant, what we're planning to do. And the feedback was that the grant design was very competitive. They were really impressed with the readiness of the project because that's a really key grant criteria. And the thing that they really liked the most is that our comprehensive plan, our affordable living policy and the small area plan all line up with what we're trying to do as far as preserving and creating affordable housing, specifically on the west side of the city. And then one factor that we have to do for as far as our competitiveness is that we have to show that we have the experience and housing expertise to execute the financing and to administer the fund once we set it up. We must have access to affordable housing redevelopment expertise the whole time we are using this fund. And so having a nonprofit partner is a key grant criteria. So just, you know, just to update you on where we are, the deadline for the grant is September 30th. That's going to be here before we know it. And we plan to bring you a draft grant framework for the September 20th work session. Tomorrow evening, we will be making presentations to the EDA and the Housing Commission. And they both will be given a preliminary overview of the grant. And we're going to request letters of support from both of them, kind of similar to what we did with our last grant, our year two grant that we received. The financing terms will be discussed at a later date because we're still working out those details once the grant is finalized. And then on September 27th, we'll be coming back to you to request for you to approve by resolution support for the grant submission. And this is very similar to what we did with our year two grant. And we're hoping to be successful again. So are there any questions?
All right, let's open it up to questions. I imagine there probably are. So Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Thank you for a lot of really very complicated work, to say the least. And I appreciate particularly aggressively going after grant funds, not only for future affordable housing, but to, in essence, reimburse the city so that we can put the monies that we use to acquire a couple of those units back into the capital reserve for other purposes. So thanks a lot for all of your efforts all across the issues that you're trying to deal with. And best of luck. And if there's anything I can do, please let me know.
Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments? Anyone else? Mr. Snyder, you didn't have another question. I see your hands up. Maybe it just didn't go down straight. Any other questions or comments?
All right, so while we're, I do want to just thank Ms. Lewis, but she's joined by a team that includes Cindy Master, Nancy Vincent, and our CPED's team with Jim Snyder and Val Weiner and others who have been helping to work this through. And so we look forward to this discussion with our boards and commissions and coming back to city council with a fuller plan. And I will note, we do have a short closed session tonight to discuss some of the potential terms in terms of structuring any deal in the future, in terms of the future management of the properties. One thing that I would note, just to end up the city manager's report, I reported earlier on the vaccination numbers at the Fall Festival.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think Vice Mayor Conley had a comment or question about the
Yeah, I do. Just one quick question to Dana. You're coming back to us in two weeks with, does the city council need to vote on this final application?
So we're coming to the 20th to kind of talk about more of a draft. That's a draft of the grant. And then the 27th, we're bringing a resolution for you to support the submission of the grant. Similar to what we did with the year two grant.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. We thank you so much.
In response to Councilmember Duncan's question about vaccination at the Fall Festival, I said over 100. That's the number that was pre-registered. In fact, the information I just got was that there were 63 actual vaccinations. So I just wanted to correct myself on that. At the Tanner Hill Heritage Music Festival, we had 58 vaccinations and then 63 this weekend at the Fall Festival. So thank you for that.
All right, does that conclude your county or city manager's report, Mr. Shields?
Yes, sir.
All right. And unless there's anything else, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
I will. We have a second reading and public hearing on TO 21-13, Ordinance to amend ordinances 2026, 2027, and 2032 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2022 for the General Fund, School Board Operating Fund, School Student Activity Fund, and the Capital Improvement Program Funds.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Shields, is Ms. Bowe handling this matter or are you?
Ms. Bowe is on the call. Ms. Bowe, could you take the lead on this?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor Carter, members of the council. We have for you the second reading of the budget amendment primarily for ARPA funds. We are requesting appropriation of about 6% of the 18 million that has been allocated to the city. And the first reading was held on August 9. This is the second reading. The numbers remain the same. We are requesting 1,061,000 for appropriation. 861,000 is for the General Fund and 200,000 is for stormwater projects advancing the funding for those in lieu of debt service. And the funds need to be expended by, encumbered by December 24 and expended by December 2026. Overall, general categories, I'm just giving up. There are no changes to the staff report, but I'm just giving a repeat since the first reading was quite a while back. So overall, there is a little bit over 200,000 for health and human services related needs, assistance to residents, and for any assistance that may be required for testing and vaccinations with Fairfax County. There is need 250,000 of this is for schools, the mental health professionals. 100,000 for speed sign on residential streets from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles an hour. And then roughly 250,000, which includes public communications, technology needs for remote access and video conferencing and grant administration and compliance. And there are a few other portions. There is this new section that was written down in the staff report to describe each of these line items in details based on the feedback and questions we received from council at the first reading. And we do have staff online here available if there are any specific questions on any of those items. Other than that, the items that are other than ARPA remain the same. There are no new changes since the first reading. And I'll keep it short and happy to address any specific questions that may be there.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. I appreciate more detail since kind of our last discussion on this. So a lot of it makes sense, especially around kind of the rent and continued assistance for food. Is my understanding of it that the state programs only provide for 60% and up AMI? And we're trying to supplement for residents below that?
That's correct. We are trying to make our funding more flexible for AMI. And we'll go below the 60% AMI needs. I'm not sure exactly what the limit is. If Dana is online, she may have that number handy. If not, I'll find out and follow up with you.
Okay, I didn't realize the state had a limit because it doesn't seem to make sense to cap it at 60% AMI when clearly people below 60% have needs too. But that's fine. It sounds like we have a need there and I'm happy to continue supporting that kind of human service need. On testing vaccination, I know that under item B, it says that we haven't heard from Fairfax County, but I want to understand the ability for our own city staff to go out and actually do more targeted vaccination outreach. So similar to how we've set up the buses or the pop-up clinics. When, again, when I looked at the latest demographic data, it's really our 25 to 34-year-old population that's lagging behind. We're in the high 70s, if not like 90% for many of our age groups. And it's that really 25 to 34 age group that is in the mid 60s. And in fact, it's actually below what we're seeing in the broader health districts. And so locally, if we can do more target efforts and use that, use those dollars to, you know, reach people in the multifamily buildings, go out and encourage them, you know, and I'm not completely joking, but, you know, offer them kind of incentives to go in and get vaccinated. I think that will go a lot farther than just general vaccination pushes, given that we have high vaccination uptake across the other populations. It's really making sure we are more targeted with that effort. So I'd like to see those dollars used towards that kind of 25 to 34 groups so that we're smarter about how we target people. The second question I had is really around the FTE ads. And so in general, I know that we're all, we'd be hesitant to kind of use one-time dollars like ARPA to fund FTE headcount. That's an ongoing concern. And so that's something I saw throughout the details. I think we're adding several headcount. Is that correct?
That is correct. And based on the guidance that we have received, these FTEs are going to be working on these specific projects would have to be working on projects that are COVID-related and based on the scope. And they are going to be limited due eligibility, the timeline. So like kind of termed employees and not just a straight add-on employees. I know Cindy wants to add more here. Cindy?
I think you captured the core of it is to be able to respond to the grant requirements, the auditing, compliance, and the procurement pieces with this in future. But it's not for long-term adding to the FTE council. Intention is not to create a structural imbalance or a gap, but to be able to deliver the services. So there would be, as you noted here, some FTEs in this initial time. And there might be some additional ones that we bring forth to consider with the larger tranches we're trying to deliver, actually federally funded programs.
How many in total FTEs are being proposed with this budget amendment?
With this one, it would be the communications position, the grant administration, just to finish out this year. And then
One more for stormwater. Stormwater, yeah. Project manager.
And then the money going to the schools. And I think they were going to add an FTE with the dollars.
That's correct.
Got it. So again, I have some caution around that, especially around communication. That just $100,000 just seems high to add another headcount to run ads and surveys on ARPA. I know that we've pushed on making sure there's good community engagement, but I'd love to know whether we can do that with our existing headcount if possible. My last question is really around, and I really hate to be nitpicky, but I want to make sure that this council's been really good at following the science. But $60,000 to add touchless fountains does not seem to follow that. We know that COVID has not spread through touch now. And so as much as I want to update things, I'd much rather see those dollars go towards upgrading HVAC infrastructure, vaccination pushes, things along those lines that we know will actually help with the pandemic, especially since so many of our buildings are new. Hopefully, a lot of that is already in place. So that was just kind of my one thing that I wanted to flag as well. That's it for now. Thank you.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I want to talk about the $100,000 for 20 mile per hour speed limit signs. If I may, we've talked about this a little bit before through the summer, so I'll not repeat myself. Thank you for showing the map and thank you for the map, which does help visualize a little bit more about what our objectives are. As I've said in the past, I've sort of test-driven this idea in various informal groups through the summer. And there's a great deal of skepticism about our ability to enforce a 20 mile per hour speed limit anywhere in the city. And so one of my questions goes to the business of can we allocate resources from ARPA to reinforce our enforcement efforts in some way? And I like to hear from the police on that. I do, you know, and I know others on council also want to do all we can to calm traffic in the neighborhoods. And so the map, which does show that we're going to maintain 25 mile per hour speed limits on the major streets, including some residential streets which serves as arterials like Southwest where I live, is good progress. I guess what I want to do with my time is just ask Zach, can we have dialogue with the Transportation Committee to get, and you, to get some notion of where we would prioritize the placement of these signs? I mean, I think of streets, I just jotted several down, as in particular need of attention being South Oak and Marshall, South Spring, Nolan, Columbia, Little Falls, Lincoln, and Northwest. Those pop out to me based on my experience, going back to when I served on the CATC myself, as streets which are residential and do have persistent speeding problems where, you know, an effort to slow things down even more than 25 would be a good idea. So I would like us to see us make those streets our point of emphasis. And second, I would love to see us invest in And second, I would love to see us invest in signage, which is actually visible in the evening hours. I know there are jurisdictions in New England and elsewhere which have illuminated signs, not like honky-tonk lights shining on the sign, but actual signs which have a power source that show you the speed limit at night when you might not otherwise notice a sign stuck on a pole in the dark. I would like to know more about whether we could provide that kind of signage as an experiment on some of these streets with the twenty mile-per-hour thing. I'm not talking about the ones that tell you what your speeds are, which we have on Southwest. Those are, those are fine. But, you know, I think the point is not to measure people who are speeding, but to actually let people know in Falls Church on these streets, the speed limit is twenty miles per hour. And better signage than what we typically have put up in the past would be, I think, helpful in getting that point across. Also, one other, I couldn't quite tell from looking at the map of Roosevelt Street over on the east end of town is counting as a, is counting in this twenty mile-per-hour sweepstakes. You know, that, that street is, because of the design and engineering, is just almost impossible to go twenty miles per hour on. And I would think that that might be seen as something of a speed trap if we try to go down twenty on that street. Oh, and finally, one other point, I'm sorry. I did have a little concern about when we do enforce it, we're going to capture a lot of people from out of the city. I mean, folks around town are going to get the word and they're by and large going to obey the speed limit. But folks from out of town are going to be, they're going to be surprised. A lot of folks are. And, you know, it doesn't take rocket scientists to figure out that most folks from our neighboring jurisdictions are more demographically diverse than we are. We just heard that tonight. So I'm a little concerned that we might develop a reputation as a speed trap for the region. And we don't, we don't want that. We particularly don't want that in the current climate. But it's bad for business to have that reputation. So I would ask us to try to somehow anticipate that and address that if we can in our enforcement of whatever signage we put up. Okay, thanks.
All right. Other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Sure. Thanks very much. Considering the limitations put on by the federal statute, while I might have certain preferences that aren't covered by the federal statute, I think this is an effort to use the funds under the existing criteria, at least this relatively compact amount. And we've already talked about the use of the majority of the funds for stormwater. And I do support the effort on twenty mile-per-hour speed limit. I think the number one public safety concern our citizens raised to us repeatedly is high-speed traffic in neighborhood areas. Much of it cut through traffic. I also think that the suggestions that Phil Duncan makes about how to best implement the signs and in an overall approach is, and involving the CACT in doing that are all very, very good suggestions. So I'm prepared to support this with a special enthusiasm for the speed limits signs, recognizing that we're going to apply them and adopt them in an effective and reasonable way. So anyway, that's kind of where I am right now. Thank you.
Ms. Hardy?
While we're on the topic of twenty miles per hour, why, what's our readiness to enforce this? Because clearly we can't just put signs up, but our police can enforce it? Or I know we've talked about speed cameras as something that several of us were interested in. Is that something that we can roll out in conjunction at some point as well?
So speed cameras are only allowed in school zones. And so that is one thing that's on our work plan and a separate issue. So, you know, what, I don't have the exact enforcement plan or the full implementation plan. What Mr. Bradley has provided is the eligible streets. What was suggested here was to have some prioritization for pilot streets. There's an opportunity for more discussion about that. This is, this appropriation will allow this now to go through a fuller process to, to consider implementation. We'll need an ordinance change and other things. So I think we'll have better answers for full implementation in those follow-up steps.
Got it. Yes, I support the twenty miles per hour, but I think just as important, as you said, is the implementation and where we do it and how we do it and how we enforce. So look forward to that discussion. Thanks.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, thanks. Do we have some examples in the region where a twenty mile-per-hour speed limit has been effective? Or where it's being utilized?
So we can look and provide those examples when we do have this fuller discussion. I can think of some examples in the District of Columbia where they've had significant cut-through problems and they've made quite a, you know, a concerted effort to send very strong signals to the traveling public that are passing through that neighborhood of its residential character that it will, you know, that the speed limits are lower than. So I've seen fifteen mile-per-hour zones. I've seen twenty mile-per-hour zones in the District of Columbia. And I think with this recent legislation by the General Assembly, we will see more of that in Virginia. But we'll give better examples when we flesh this out and bring it to council for fuller discussion.
Okay. Zach's got his hand up. I don't know if he has comments on that.
I do. Just one quick comment, if you don't mind. I do want to note, as Mr. Shields pointed out, the, call them yellow streets on the attached map, or the streets that are eligible in Speed Zone One or what I'll call Phase One. That does not mean all of these streets are going to get lower speed limit signs. Roosevelt is a great example. Northwest is kind of on the fringe. And what I mean by that is through working with CPADS through the NTC program, we have found out that many of our residential streets actually have an eighty-fifth percentile speed of around twenty-five to twenty-six miles an hour, which means that we can simply change a sign out. And from an engineering perspective, we're not making the road more safe. We're not making it less safe. It's changing a sign quite simply is not going to change driving habits in and of itself. But what it will do is it will allow now those speeders who are maybe on the threshold of receiving a ticket, they will now be able to get one. The speeders who are going forty miles an hour and at twenty-five, you know, if we were catching them before, we'll continue to catch them. If we weren't, then we'll continue not to without beefed up enforcement. But I think that's important to note is that speeds are already lower than thirty miles an hour on most of these streets that are shown in yellow on the map. So I just wanted to explain that to everybody as well.
Okay. So here, here are my thoughts on this. I am certainly for reducing cut-through. I'm certainly for reducing folks speeding through town. However, I think further to your comments, Zach, you know, when people are speeding, it's not that they're going twenty-seven, twenty-eight miles an hour. They're going forty, forty-five, in some cases fifty. And so lowering it from twenty-five to twenty without the enforcement aspect, I feel like this is, one, we're getting ahead of ourselves. And two, this is going to end up being more of a burden on the community that are, that are probably going to end up, you know, for who knows how long, getting tickets written for going twenty-six, twenty-seven miles an hour. And so again, it's not that I don't support driving slower, but I feel like us coming right out of the gates, one, not being able to enforce even the twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit that we have and now imposing twenty without admittedly it not making it any more safe or less safe. I just, I feel like I don't have enough to be able to say, let's go ahead and let the horse out of the, out of the barn here and start spending money to move towards some initiative that, again, we just don't really have good data on and can't support and most importantly, can't enforce. And why, to your point about DC, so I get it for DC, but DC has speed cameras. And when you drive into DC, between the red light or between the red light cameras and the speed cameras, you know, when you see a stop sign, people are, they know that that enforcement's around the corner. In Falls Church, you know, we don't have that same level of enforcement. And so for me, I'd rather see us spend a hundred thousand dollars to help the police department and the sheriff department implement better enforcement than just arbitrarily changing the speed limit signs from twenty-five to twenty when that's not really going to solve, solve the problem. So again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea. I just don't think that it makes sense right now. And it seems like, it seems like a waste of money at this particular point. So those are my thoughts on it. So I just, I can't support that, that hundred thousand dollar allocation. There's a couple other things in this allocation of ARPA funds that I don't really understand. And I'm sorry I had to step away during Karen's presentation. I'm a little bit under the weather here all of a sudden. And I missed some of the questions and comments. But I have issues with spending some of this money that looks like we're setting up ourselves to just increase our carrying and operating costs going forward, some of these full-time hires, which we say may be short-term and midterm, but I just don't think it's a good use of funding. There are certain areas I support the investment in the mental health professionals in the schools. I think some of the investment in technology makes sense. And I think some of the investments in facility improvements. But there's, you know, half of this, or I shouldn't say half, a couple hundred thousand dollars of this that I think is just money that we shouldn't be spending right now. And further to our conversation about stormwater, it's just, I can't wrap my head around the fact that we want to nickel and dime ourselves out of this ARPA money and we'd be an opportunity to make a very smart investment. And we revisit some of these other items after we've addressed those. But again, I feel like we're making investments in things that are actually going to end up costing us more money in the future. So as this stands further to my comments last time when we addressed this, and it doesn't look like there have been any changes. There have just been responses to these questions. I just can't support spending money like this. And it frankly drives me nuts when we're sitting on eighteen million dollars and, you know, we're starting again to just chip away at this and spend money on things that I just, I can't see. I just can't, I can't see the benefit of some of this. So I'm struggling to find a way to support this, the way that it's being presented in total.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So no one's saying that signs in and of themselves will lower the speed, but they're a critical tool along with enforcement and education to doing that. And, and the difference in effects on a human body when something hits it at twenty-five miles an hour versus twenty miles an hour is significant. So, you know, whenever it's appropriate, I'm prepared to move forward on this as presented.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paul Snyder, Planning Director with the city. Just to the point that was just made about the difference in speed, you know, what difference does five miles an hour really make? There is, there is a chart in the back of the city's Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program that charts the difference. It's the rate of risk of a severe injury versus the impacts, the speed of the car at impact. Car going at twenty-five miles an hour, the risk of a severe injury is about twenty-five percent. When you drop the speed down to twenty, the risk of a severe injury falls into that ten to fifteen percent range. It's still not zero, but you've cut the rate, the risk of injury by almost half by reducing the speed by five miles an hour. There are other cities in the US that have reduced their speed limits to twenty miles an hour. I know Portland, Oregon had a major campaign around twenty is plenty. And there are other places in the US that have done it as well. I think if the request from council is to find out other places that have done this and whether they had other elements of that program that made it successful, I think we could look that up.
All right. Thank you. So to wrap this up, I have a few comments myself, one of which does go to the speed issue. One, I'd like to know more about just how many pedestrian accidents, how many people get hit in the city a year and what kind of, you know, issues we have. I do think kind of an indiscriminate twenty miles an hour by signage is just not the best solution. Personally, what I think would be a good solution would be to put pedestrian improvements in that actually cause the streets to be, you know, kind of choked up at points like we do with these bumpouts that cause a physical constriction in the road, which cause people to need to slow down and at the same time provide shelter to pedestrians. I think that sort of kills two birds with one stone. And in some ways, it may be more expensive in that obviously making concrete bumpouts is more expensive than putting up signs. But I'm not sure if it's not significantly more effective in the long run because there's only so many places the police can be. And from my own personal observations, I've frankly rarely noticed the police on these side streets and mostly seeing them on Broad. And so if that is to continue, I think it's going to be difficult to see big results on these side streets. That's not to say I'm not supportive of lowering the speed limit, but I think we should be thoughtful in how we do it and where we do it and try, you know, some pilot places and see how it works and try to learn the most effective strategies to increase the safety of our, of our kids particularly and pedestrians especially overall, and then apply that more broadly across the city. And then secondly, as relates to the question of additional full-time employees, I do have concerns, as others have raised, about getting more mouths to feed here in the city. I think the idea of using one-time money, I think, as Letty mentioned, for continuing efforts is not a good general way to do business. And in particular, this idea of hiring a communications person, probably making fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars to oversee a hundred thousand dollar communication spend seems to be, to not be a good use of funds. So I would say in general, I have concerns about hiring additional employees and in particular about that one. But I do think, as a few others have articulated, the notion of using this money for long-term recurring benefits through monies that otherwise would be costing taxpayers on a regular basis is certainly among the best uses of this money. And I would encourage us to continue down that path. To the extent this is approved tonight, I might suggest that, you know, the money not be spent tomorrow, but that we have further conversations about some of the issues that people have raised. And so maybe the money gets allocated these various buckets. But there is further council conversation about specifically how it's spent, such as the twenty mile-an-hour speed limit, which clearly has some questions from various folks and maybe also the hiring of additional employees. So I don't know if that's possible, Mr. Shields, if we were to make this allocation now that we could have a commitment to have further discussion about some of the issues that have been raised before the money's actually spent? So here's what I would propose. Certainly for the traffic signs, there are formal actions that the city council would need to take prior to us moving forward on that program. So that is one where the council will have additional, you know, formal actions. With respect to the communications strategy, what I would propose is to get back with council. If the council were to approve the funding, you know, one of the discussions that we are having is, is, you know, in terms of using the, the local newspaper as a means to get word out to the public in a more regular way. That's, that's a kind of a, one important part of this overall strategy. And, and so if I could have the opportunity to flesh that out in discussions with staff and the local paper and give that proposal back to the city council for you to review before we execute it, that might be a way that we could proceed on that. I would just say as to that, Mr. Shields, I think the question was not so much, or the issue was not so much using the local newspaper, but whether the city needed to hire a full-time employee to supervise that activity, an additional communications person. Well, so they're connected in my mind anyway, because the, the, when we've done that in the past, the, the demand of time to get it in, you know, to deal with the content and to sort of produce it on a regular basis was very time-consuming. And I believe that still will be the case. And so that's why those two are connected in, in what I just said. So you're, you're saying that you think you need a full-time employee to run the ad once a week? Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that's basically been the issue for, you know, the past, you know, many years where, when we discontinued doing that. Is it's the labor to produce the content and format it appropriately, you know, for, for it to be.
the content and format it appropriately, you know, for, for it to be in the newspaper on a regular basis. When we did that before, that was an FTE.
Not, not to belabor the point, but I can't fathom that it takes a 40-hour-a-week person to put together a, you know, a one-page ad a week, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave that.
Okay. That's actually a point well taken. I don't think that's the full program, but it has been, you know, that's been a, a dimension to, you know, being able to get that done.
So Ms. Hiscott has a comment. Debbie?
I mean, it's along the same lines, you know, having worked with the Chamber of Commerce who does weekly information in the local paper and through schools and doing some myself, you know, that's just part of a part-time person's job. I understand the city has got many more issues and many more events, but I, I agree. I just, I struggle to think that that should be such a, a large amount of time used for that particular position. I'd, I appreciate that. And stormwater project management, I think some of those areas are much more important. Or maybe we take the, you know, $60,000 for the touchless and use that towards more vaccine ads specifically. But I just wanted to insert my opinion on that as well.
Ms. Mester, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify on the facility improvements and maintenance. The touchless features is a small part, but I think part of the perception and overall health that really does, that item does have a lot with drop boxes. We, we don't have a permanent drop box for citizens who are doing online and trying to be compactless in terms of not coming into City Hall. And also the custodial fees for the increased high-touch cleaning that we need to do now that we have folks back into the facility. So I just wanted to clarify that there's more to that line item than the, the motionless touchless approach, but that is certainly a piece of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there other comments about this topic? Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We received no public comment on this item.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO-21-13 with further discussion on implementation, particularly on the communication and speed limit issues.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Duncan on a second. Is there any further comment anyone would like to make? All right, Madam Clerk?
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, I couldn't get my hand fast enough. I'm slow. So on the, the note that Dave Snyder put in, so I would support this on the condition that we actually hold back on hiring people until we have further discussion.
Is that agreeable as part of your motion, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, whatever his name is, yes.
I'll never forget all what's his name. Okay. And we had a second as well. Mr. Duncan, is that okay with you as well?
I've already forgotten that I seconded it. Yes, now the resecond will accept that.
All right. I'm going to ask the city attorney if that's all honky-dory with her. I presume it is.
That's fine.
All right, let's go on with the, Ms. Hardy, do you have another comment?
That, that, thank you for the amendment.
Uh huh. All right. So Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yep.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
No.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two. Thank you.
All right, let's keep on moving. Is this a pretty short one, Mr. Shields, this vacation of the easement?
Yeah, rather than providing a staff report for this, why don't we just ask, we have had this on first reading, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we, we could go straight to motion.
May I read the title?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. We have TO-21-12 ordinance to vacate an approximately 656 square-foot drainage easement, which traverses the property known as 504th Randolph Street, RBC number 52-608-003, from the western border to the northeast corner. And this was, had first reading on July 26th, if we've forgotten that.
All right. Are there any questions about this? Questions or comments? Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
We received no public comment on this item.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion? All right, the item fails for lack of, yep.
I'll move to adopt TO-21-12.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, was that Ms. Hardy on the second or Ms. Hiscott?
Hiscott.
All right, Ms. Hiscott on the second. Any further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. It's now 9:30, which is two hours into our meeting. I would suggest maybe we take a short break to use the restrooms, maybe get some drink or so, and reconvene in five minutes at 9:35. Does that work? All right. So we're, we're going to recess for five minutes till 9:35, and then reconvene at 9:30. It's nine, now 9:36. You ready to reconvene?
Cindy, are they ready?
I am confirming.
They did a little test.
I am confirming. Please hold.
All right.
Yes, ready on FCC TV side. So Celeste, when you see it on Granicus, we're good.
All right, I think we're good to go.
All right, after a short, short break, we are now reconvening. Time is 9:37. Welcome back to everyone. And Madam Clerk, will you now call the next item, please?
I will. Let's see. We have TR-21-27, resolution to adopt FY 2021 funding recommendations for community development block grant at CDBG and home investment partnerships program, home funds, funds, and to authorize the city manager to enter into the annual agreements with Fairfax County and grantees to participate in the CDBG and home programs.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, is Ms. Lewis handling this matter?
Ms. Lewis will handle this item. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. Long time no see.
Thank you. I will be brisk. So this is our first year with Fairfax County as part of their entitlement area. And so city council has requested to approve the housing commission's recommendations for the allocation of federal CDBG and home investment partnership funds for FY 2022, and then authorize city manager to intervene to those agreements. And so for this year, we, the major thing I want you to know is that we have two grantees that we will be funding. The Falls Church Housing Corporation, Virginia Community Development Corporation, Storm Replacement Doors, in the amount of $36,000, and Homestretch Incorporated Transitional Housing for Homeless Families in the amount of $31,000. And so this year we have two grantees that did not come in for funding. The schools, the, the Falls Church City Public Schools Family Resource Program has schools' funds that will support the program this year. And the Falls Church Community Services Council, we usually provide funds to them for rental assistance, but they have a lot of CARES Act money this year from Fairfax County. And so therefore, they did not request funding. So we will be funding those two grantees that I mentioned. We will be preparing sub-recipient agreements for them. This is our first year with Fairfax County, and so we're excited to work with them and going through the process. And that is pretty much it. Do you have any questions?
All right. Any questions or comments? Okay. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TR-21-27.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And was that Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Shance Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So let's move on now. We actually have a portion of our meeting is technically a work session. So I believe, Mr. Shields, it's now time to move on to that portion, unless you had anything you wanted to do before, to conclude before we go on to a work session?
No, that's correct. That was our intention, is to go into work session now.
All right, we're in work session now. How about that? And we were coming into work session to discuss Founder's Row 2 in a little more detail. And so how's that going to work, Mr. Shields? Does staff have a presentation they'd like to make, or?
We do. We, we wanted to provide the city council with an update on changes to the project since your last discussion on July 19th. Paul Stoddard will provide a staff report that will focus in on those changes. We're also joined by the developers representative, Mr. Joe Muffler, representing Mill Creek. And, and he also will share graphics and other information on changes. We want to reserve the majority of our discussion time for questions and answers from council. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Stoddard first.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council. Before I jump into the presentation, I just want to let you know, it should take about six or seven minutes to get through the staff presentation. I'm not going to focus on the depth of the application. I know Mr. Holler had the opportunity to do that with you all last time. So I'm really going to spend my time focusing on the changes since you last saw this. So changes to the staff report, you all saw this before in a work session on July 19th, and applicant has since revised their, their application, we're calling it submission 2.1. They have made some changes since you all last saw it. So the request for council tonight, they're on line two. First one is for, for you to provide feedback, to review and provide feedback on this revised submission, if we want to call it submission 2.1. And then the second is for, they're on line nine, for council to schedule this application for consideration for first reading. And I'll talk more about the timing going forward at the end of my report. Recommendation from staff, beginning on line 12, is that the applicant continue to look at five elements of the project, including the commercial components, refining the amount and the programming of the programming of those commercial spaces, the environmental performance of their proposal, looking at environmental design, including the amount of open space, green space, and then opportunities to use more green infrastructure. Reviewing largely, this is their voluntary contributions, concessions on the housing and public facility impacts, and refining those proposed concessions in terms of the mix of affordable housing, utilities, and facility contributions, continuing to engage with the neighborhood to address any concerns that arise throughout the project review process. And then, as always, looking at urban design of the project, refining streetscape and building architecture and design as the application process moves forward. Jumping down to line, looks like 26 in the staff report, these are updates since you last saw it. Line 27, this is all the same information you saw before. So these are the changes between submission one and submission two. Jumping down to line 51, this is where we get into the changes in submission 2.1. So there are some urban design changes there, starting on line 56. Updates to the public spaces and the layout of the park there at the intersection of Southwest and Ellison Street, redirecting the lobby entrance, the residential lobby entrance away from the intersection with Ellison and towards Southwest Street, and then the addition of a green roof along the western portion of the roof of the project. There was also an addition to the voluntary concession. So there were a lot of cleanup in the voluntary concessions in terms of formatting, ease of reading and navigation, and then also some substantive changes. For example, a contribution of, a proposed contribution of $100,000 to the city's missing link sidewalks program to be used within the vicinity of the project. And also a process update there on line 63, in response to a question from some council members, the applicant did hold a community meeting or a neighborhood meeting on the evening of July 29. I'm going to step through some of these responses to council questions, but not all of them. Line 71, and these questions are organized not in the order they were received from council, but they're organized by the primary and secondary criteria within the city zoning ordinance. So criteria one talks about consistency with comprehensive plan. There was a press from council to show how this proposed application would relate to other recent developments or developments under consideration within the city. And I'm going to ask if we can jump to attachment number nine. So this is a new, it's loading, this is a new graphic that I don't think council has seen before. This is going back to the, to the city, the city's development activities since the early 2000s. And what's shown here is the city's three revitalization districts. So you've got West Broad Street, Washington Street, and then as well as the East End, which is in the call-out box in the lower right corner. And these were the revitalization districts that the city formally adopted inside the comprehensive plan just a few years ago. And of course, some guidance for development in these revitalization areas that while opportunities for new development on vacant land are limited, there are numerous instances of underutilized properties that could be subject to other additional development or redevelopment. So what's color-coded here is those properties that have largely redeveloped since the early 2000s. Some of the larger projects that people talk about, things like the Pearson Square, the Byron, the North Gate, the 301 West Broad. But then some of them are also the smaller projects, things like the Scramble that just went up on Fairfax Street, or the reuse of the historic structure there to make Northside Social possible. So it's a mix of projects, both large and small. By the numbers, there are about 1,400 acres of land area in the city total. 303 of those are within the city's revitalization districts, and 94 of those acres have either been redeveloped, are under construction, or under consideration for redevelopment. So over about 20-year period, about 94 of the 303 acres being redeveloped are considered for redevelopment. So let's go ahead and jump back, if we could, to the staff report. Let's see, line 72, there was a discussion amongst council members about the mix of residential versus commercial uses. And there's just some clarifying language in the application about just what is that square footage of commercial space, and how does that relate to the amount of residential space. If we go down to the next box on the next page, there's also some back and forth about commercial and whether there should be more commercial or different types of commercial. The voluntary concessions that were submitted in August 20th as part of submission 2.1, it was agreed in those VCs that of the 15,000 square feet of commercial space, about 5,000 would be designated for restaurant uses, and then the others would be a variety of retail sales and restaurants. Let's see, if we jump down to line 73, where it gets into, oh, perfect, where it talks about fiscal impact. Here, we just pulled up some information that was already in the staff report. There was a question about what would the fiscal impact of the project be? The total fiscal impact is projected using the city's formulas to be about $433,000 annually. That works out to a per-acre basis of about $210,000 annually. The reason for doing per-acre is that then it allows comparisons to other projects that were recently approved within the city. And there, when you look at recent projects, the per-acre net fiscal impact is, of course, a range with a median of $270,000 and an average of $240,000. Going forward, there's no line number here, but if we jump down to the, about the middle of the next block, perfect. Talking about the building heights along Ellison, there was a question from council, and the staff report was cleaned up to clarify. The question was, how would the proposed building height of 30 feet compare to what's across the street? The buyright allowable building height for single-family housing on Ellison is 35 feet to the midline of the roof, so the top of the roof could actually be taller than that 35 feet. So the proposed building height immediately along Ellison at 30 feet is shorter than that. And then where the building steps up to a taller type, that's taller height, that's 95 feet back from the Ellison Street properties. In regards to next box, concerns about too much hardscape. As I mentioned, applicant added a green roof, a proposed green roof along the western side of the project. Let's see, we talked about the relocation of the lobby on Ellison. I want to jump down to line 75. Council had asked for a Counsel had asked for evaluation of the VCs as well as additional contributions to things that the city has in its policies regarding sidewalks, parks, small area plan concepts. So staff provided a short rundown of the voluntary concessions, and these numbers are preliminary. And staff will continue to refine those analyses as we go forward with the application. So first in the list is those are those VCs that had a specific dollar contribution. School capital, $310,000, sidewalks, $100,000, library and parks, $50,000, stormwater fund, $20,000. Go to the next page. And then other infrastructure, these are things that are included in the VCs or in the project design, but they don't have a specific, they're not cash contributions to the city. So first is affordable housing, a total of 12%, split between 60 and 80% AMI. And just to make council aware, staff has compared this to the recently approved ADU program at the Broad and Washington project. And the value of those two things is comparable, and staff will continue to look at that to get a better sense of how the two relate. Commitment to lead goal certification within the building, publicly accessible open space, utility undergrounding. And there, that's a rough estimate, that $5 to $8 million, and that's supposed to be an estimate of what it would cost the city government to undertake that same project. That does include, I know there was a question about what undergrounding would be included. And it's about 370 feet of frontage along Southwest Street, as well as 270 feet of frontage along Ellison Street. 15 electric vehicle charging stations, and then a bus stop with a bus shelter. With that, I actually want to stop my report on the content of the application and jump to the timing section, which is on page 572. I'm sorry, line 572. Page 572 would be a long report. Perfect. Thank you. So what's proposed in the staff report would be council to take up consideration of first reading at its regular meeting on September 27th, which would be in two weeks. Assuming a positive referral, staff has built out the rest of the schedule. The project would then go out to, that would be part of a formal referral to boards and commissions, which would run through September and October. And then council would see this again when it comes back with all those comments from the boards and commissions, and then council could provide further direction there. But with that, that concludes my staff report. And I can either take questions now, or we can turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Why don't we go and turn it over to the applicant, and then we'll go into questions and comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Stoddard, for that detailed summary. The reality is you did touch on a lot of the presentation materials. So there is detail within this presentation reflects those edits, which I am happy to discuss. But first off, I thought what I would start off with is an acknowledgement and an update on Founder's Row Phase 1. Because while it is extremely important in my mind to consider the merits of Founder's Row Phase 2 in and of itself, to ensure that it is as perfect of a project as we can, as we can pull together, I certainly acknowledge that this does not exist in the vacuum, that it exists in tandem with Founder's Row Phase 1 and all that is occurring over then, over, over across the street. So to that end, I really think there are two opportunities to consider and discuss tonight. The first is to ensure that a proper focus is being paid to the commercial success over at Phase 1. While the second opportunity here is to capitalize on what I think is a long-awaited chance to approve upon a blighted and underserved corner of the city. And that, and I firmly believe that we as partners, the city and Mill Creek, can utilize the coming months as we have these past few to advance both of those in a situation that ultimately benefits the city. And to that end, you know, we met in late July. Over these last six weeks, I'm happy to say that we have agreed to terms with five commercial tenants at Phase 1. All of those tenants are in the food and beverage space of varying sizes and offerings. And frankly, and even maybe more excitingly, they are of a caliber, true award-winning caliber that frankly is, is not only exciting, but beating what our expectations were, certainly last year, but even dating back prior to that as well. And we are excited to publicly announce those in more detail in the coming days, along with other exciting tenants that are behind. I mean, as I have emphasized, this has been a long process. It has taken a good bit of time for the retail market to recover, but we are in that process now, and we are very excited about where that is progressing, along with having the first residents of Founder's Row move in in the next two weeks. And concurrent to that, I mean, as staff just summarized, we did take to heart the comments that we received from staff and council, from neighbors to advance Phase 2 as much as we could. So it's my hope tonight, I guess, in summary, to say that, you know, rather than waiting, what I would love to be able to do is to take advantage of these next few months as we evaluate Phase 1 and continue to progress Phase 2, to allow Phase 2 to be exposed to a more broad audience for more pragmatic problem solving. I've received questions about traffic and stormwater and design and environmental. And while we are doing our best to tackle these, truly the best way of polishing this is by advancing, having additional conversations and working this through. But to that end, we do understand and acknowledge that there is an accountability for the success of Phase 1. We, and by we, I'm now saying Mill Creek, need and want Phase 1 to be as successful as possible. That goes without saying. That is a $200 million investment that we have made with the city, to which we own all parts, and we desperately want to see the commercial and the residential succeed there. But while we are moving that forward and announcing new tenants, we are excited about the opportunity to advance Phase 2, to work on this corner, and to hopefully and ultimately provide a win-win opportunity for the city. So with that, that's, that's my remarks for you all. I would ask whoever's controlling the slides, if you could click through maybe one more slide. One more slide, I apologize. Just to show a couple of these renderings, this is the relocation of the lobby to further up West Street. So now it's more central on West as opposed to at the corner. Next slide, please. This is a reprogrammed and a more green area over here. It's softer, it's greener, it doesn't have as much hardscape and seating. You can keep progressing, but it still is a gathering place for the neighborhood. Keep clicking through the slides. Next one as well. Again, the green elements, there's touching on where those, there's actually two green roofs, an open space ratio, tree canopy ratio, onsite stormwater treatment. And again, these have been summarized. So with that, I would like to address any questions, concerns you might have, any updates that you might want to hear from, and I sincerely appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your efforts, and we look forward to this conversation. Before I open it up to questions, I know myself and I believe at least several others were concerned about comparisons with VCs for what's being offered here versus other projects such as the Washington Broad project. I know, Mr. Shields, you and I have had some conversations on this. We heard a little bit from Mr. Stoddard, and it was a little bit cryptic to me. Can you tell us specifically where you are with, you know, kind of actual number comparisons as far as VC contributions and offers right now?
Thank you, Mayor. And so what we are, as the council will recall with the Broad and Washington project, we had a chart that provide a summary of all the voluntary concessions of projects going back to 2008. And so what we've wanted to do is to populate that chart with the, with data, you know, obviously preliminary and tentative at this point, because the the voluntary concessions are not settled. But so council could see a comparison of what the voluntary concessions are here relative to other projects. And we've not completed that work. There's still kind of more information that's needed. And because I think that, you know, on a case like this, it will be important, that analysis, I think, will be important for the city council. We did not feel at, for tonight's meeting, we were ready to present that table. We are working on it, and I think with some additional information, we'll be able to produce that shortly, but we do not have it ready for tonight.
Okay. So what we talked about is sort of trying to compare apples to apples, the value of, you know, hey, it's a reduced school contribution maybe, but more affordable. How, how does all that kind of even out in comparison with other projects and what's been offered and provided other projects? That's not just ready just yet, but you hope to have that ready shortly?
Yes, sir. Exactly.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead. I just wanted to start with some clarification on that point. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to questions and comments from folks right now. And maybe while we're waiting, I guess I would just ask a little bit. Mr. Muffler, you mentioned commercial at the other site. So I know folks are moving in this month across the other site. When are commercial tenants going to be moving in?
Commercial tenants will begin their tenant improvements within the next, before the end of the year, before the end of the year, within the next three to four months. It's a process that requires obviously permitting and build-out. And then depending on the size and type of tenant, there's a period of time for them, them to open as well. The positive news, the extremely positive news is just the momentum we've had in terms of agreeing to terms with retailers and the amount of retailers that are now back in the market and interested in the project.
So the retailers that you have interest from, are those letters of intent or are those leases that are being?
Correct, correct. We have agreed to letters of intent and term sheets with all these, with these tenants.
Any leases signed yet?
They will be signed literally this week.
Okay. And then you say tenant improvements commence maybe before the end of the year. When will we expect the, the businesses to open for business approximately?
I would say first businesses you can expect in spring of next year, late first, early second quarter.
Okay. And I don't know if you touched on the movie theater, whether you can touch on the movie theater, and if you feel like that's something you don't wish to speak up publicly.
No.
I just, I don't think you mentioned, or at least I don't recall hearing about it, and I wonder if you had any update on that?
No, I appreciate that, and I certainly didn't mean to gloss over it. I do try to be as candid as I can be in these settings. We remain in significant negotiations with a handful of theaters. I toured two separate operators last week. We have been very close on a term sheet. As I told a few council members, unfortunately, the theater performances summer has slowed it down. But the positive news is that there are a handful of operators still interested, and we remain in significant negotiations with them.
All right, thank you. So we do have some questions now. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to some of my colleagues. First, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you for those questions, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the update, Joe, as much as you can tell us. We appreciate it. I remain optimistic that we're going to set this thing in the water right when the pandemic finally lapses and we get back to normal. And the businesses that you're going to attract, one will, will thrive because there is going to be a surge of commercial and just people getting out of their houses, I think, sometime next year. And this building is going to be poised to take advantage of that. But I want to talk about Founder's Row too, because that's why we're here. And thank you for meeting with the community. I met with a couple of the representatives of the community, myself, over the summer. And my two questions sort of relate to concerns that I've heard from folks in the neighborhood, my neighborhood. One is, you know, how the building meets the street on Ellison. Now, the design that you've got is, I think, a nice design. There seems to be some discussion about whether there should be lawns in front of the townhouse-like apartments on Ellison Street. I mean, for my money, the drawings look pretty good. They look like, you know, townhouses. But I have heard some thugs who, I don't know, they don't want to hear the mowers that are going to be running to cut the grass on those lawns or whatever, but is there, is there, or maybe this is a question for staff as much as for you, Joe, is there a vision of what the Ellison Street greenscape would look like if it were not a sort of grassy lawn? Paul, I don't know if that's come up in discussions among staff or not.
If it's a question to staff, the specific landscaping in front of those townhouses hasn't come up, but certainly through the conceptual development plan, which is something that council reviews and takes action on, we could certainly look at the landscaping plan along that frontage. We could, you guys could larger than they sort of direct, I think, what you would want that to look like. You could certainly include things like perennial shrubs, you know, understory trees might go up nice against the building with maybe some larger canopy trees up against the street edge. I think there are a lot of things you could do there that, that would certainly be low impact in terms of environmental design as, as well as sort of noise from any maintenance.
Okay, good. All right, that's, it's helpful to know that there are some options that we can consider as we go through the process.
And, Mr. Duncan, if I may to provide clarity, because this did come up as a point of confusion during that walking tour. Slide five shows this somewhat, but those are lawns that are not privately maintained by each resident. Those are maintained by the property. So just like all landscaping on the property, this will be maintained and go to order. So will there be mowing on occasion? There will. But as you can see, there are trees and shrubs as well. We are open to whatever. It just, you know, I would say it mimics the Park Avenue facade at Phase 1, but this will feel even more residential than that. You know, we kind of learned from what we did on Park Avenue, and we're hoping to do even better this time.
Okay.
We are open to ideas.
Okay, good. I think the openness to the discussion is what's important at this stage. A second question about transportation, which of course is a very interesting, a very important issue for folks in my neighborhood. Talk about the Broad Street side. You know, think about how the North Gate building works over on North Washington Street. There's a median cut, there's an in and out. There's a no-left turn out of the building, but you can turn out of the building to the right. You can turn into the building from the southbound lanes. What are you thinking, you've gone down from two entrances to one, as I understand it, on the Broad Street side, which is good for pedestrian access and safety. What are you thinking about how the movements are going to work on the north side of the building on Broad Street, and if there's going to be need for removal or modification of the median that's there now?
Absolutely. And if I may, could you please go to slide eight, because this does touch on this to an extent, and I won't cover all these details. Because the reality is, I would say, this is the area. We spent about two to two and a half hours walking with the neighborhood, and I'd say an hour of that was focused just on traffic. And this is the area of the plan that will require us rolling up our sleeves and working with the city's engineers. Everything you see on here are ideas that were socialized at that meeting, with the one exception being the insert there in the top right, which speaks to kind of these alternating turn movements. This was an idea from the neighbors that we brought to the city to discuss to allow for a median break that allows for left-hand turn movements out of the building onto Broad Street, so that the only left-hand turn isn't onto West Street. Because all this is about alleviating traffic on West Street and thus, you know, diminishing the burden from anyone trying to move from their neighborhood, be it Ellison or others, onto West Street. So there are a significant amount of ideas that need to be studied. I will say, for example, we talked about controlling turn movements to certain times a day on Broad, on West Street. And the neighbors rightly pointed out that just means people will just make a right-hand turn and do a U-turn on Ellison Street. So there are these rippling effects that need to be considered, which is why ultimately the engineers need to be brought into the equation and certainly will be a focus during boards and commissions and refining the CDP. But we have taken steps, so far at least, to improve upon what was initially submitted, and we will continue to do so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the effort to go into the thing. Normally, we don't get much down, this much down in the weeds, you know, at this stage. But that's what board and commission reviews are for. But, you know, it's, it's, it's an important issue, transportation movements around the building. I will say that each of the new buildings that we put up, there's been concern about traffic movements around them. I remember there was concern about the Harris Teeter entrance was going to create enormous traffic jam in the downtown. And I think happily, it's not turned out to be the case. The North Gate in and out works pretty well, I think. So I'm hopeful that smart engineers and urban designers on your staff will be able to, you know, address the problems there too. One last thing, the fiscal impact numbers are, I think, affected in a way that may not show up in the charts by your host's decision to knock a floor off of the building as initially proposed. I assume that if you had additional residential on that extra floor, because residential has proven to be a moneymaker, that fiscal impact would be even better. But a decision was made to accommodate concerns among the near neighbors about the height and density of the project as it relates to their views from their houses on Ellison and Park and so forth, Parker. So I just wanted to make note of that and say that, you know, we've already knocked off a floor, which that just, that's just taking money out of our pockets. That's something we're willing to do in order to make the near neighbors, you know, feel more comfortable with the project, but it is, it is something that has fiscal impact. Okay, thanks for all.
Thank you, Phil. Ms. Siskat? Ms. Siskat, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, thank you.
I wanted to bring our attention back to memo from the ESC to us earlier this summer on June 2nd with recommendations on electric vehicles and how that could help us, you know, promote electric vehicles, thus improving climate situation, et cetera. Their recommendations were to have 5% of parking spots for electric vehicles. Right now, the current proposal is about 3%. They also requested having, being prepared to have up to 50% of the parking spots prepared for electric vehicles. As we continue to see that increase, and right now, that's also about at 3%. So a total of around 7%. So it's, it's underneath the goals that our boards and commissions have recommended to us on that front. It's great that we've gotten to lead gold on the other component here, but we're kind of, maybe I missed it, but it seems kind of silent on the 20% improvement on energy performance. Those are the two components that we added to our special exceptions back, I guess that was earlier this year. So before we even go back to boards and commissions, I might as well just put that up, up front, that that's something that the council took into consideration from the ESC as excellent recommendations. So I just want to put that out there. Thanks for your time, Joe.
duly noted.
All right, Mr. Snyder? Mr. Snyder?
Sure, so I have a few questions. Founders Row 1, it's my view that we should not go forward with Founders Row 2 until Founders Row 1 and its commercial commitments are substantially performed. So my question is this, what square footage? Let's assume at face value your five commercial occupancies. What square footage do they occupy? What tax revenue would they generate compared to the project that we had agreed to originally? And I know that there's no promise on a theater, so I'm going to assume that we can't assume anything on the theater at this point. So what I want to know is a whole lot more about the certainty, but more importantly, the square footage and the net tax revenue generation from, from these commercial opportunities that we've been told about tonight on Founders Row 1. I really want a comparison, whether we're getting what we agreed to on Founders Row 1 yet with these changes, or whether we're still very much at a loss compared to the original Founders Row 1. So that's very important to me. The second thing is on VCs. Basically, Broad and Washington did a bait and switch. That is, oh, we'll give you more affordable dwelling units, but we'll take money out of what we traditionally required for schools and parks. That's not my interest. My interest is putting additional ADUs on top of the other VCs that we've traditionally required. So I'm interested from the city manager's standpoint, that chart that he referred to, and that's, that's fundamental to me. The third issue is really a question, have all the neighborhood issues been addressed? We've heard about some. The question is, have all of them? And finally, here's a question for the developer. What's the percentage of commercial versus residential on the site on Founders Row 2?
Staff can clarify, but I believe it's about 6 or 7%.
6 or 7% commercial, okay. Now, going back to my request, what, what information will we have and when will we have it with regard to Founders Row 1? You know, you've made some comments tonight. I'm interested in knowing what, what we'll know and when we'll know it, because I would be uneasy moving forward until the finances of, of Founders Row 1 are totally understood. So why don't you tell me something about that?
Sure, sure. And I can't, I appreciate those comments, Mr. Snyder. I, I unfortunately do not have the crystal ball to tell you what that end goal net impact will be. What I can tell you is what I know today. Of the five retailers we have, they total approximately 13,000 square feet. So that's about a third of the non-theater retail. You know, that we've been able to agree to terms on in the last six weeks. Of those retailers though, again, this is a gut, so, so you disqualify it as you may. I, I would imagine that they meet or exceed, those retailers specifically, meet or exceed the city's initial projections based on the fact that, again, they are all food and beverage operators. So they are subject to the higher food and beverage taxes, which was a key component of the VCs and the original fiscal impact model. But then also, again, the caliber of those tenants and the sales projections that they're offering are substantial in terms of the business they drive and the type of sales that they, that they promote. But, you know, we, we, I'll echo back to what Mr. Duncan says. Things feel very, as good as they can today, certainly far better than they did even nine months ago. And we hope and believe that that would continue over the next 12 months as we continue to lease out, you know, the remaining commercial over the next three, six, nine, 12 months.
I guess my, I guess my view on that generally is special exceptions grant the ability to make profits to developers they wouldn't otherwise make. And I, I need to understand that we're going to get performance on Founders Row 1 before we, we grant another opportunity to this developer. So that's fundamental to me and I, I, I hope that we'll hear a lot more specificity. Joe, you did say that one-third of the proposed retail space was being occupied by these ones that you have commitments for. Did I, did I hear you say that?
Yeah, I mean, these, those are rough numbers, Mr. Snyder. I'd say that there's about, there's in between 45 and 50,000 square feet of non-theater retail. And so if we're at 13,000 square feet, you know, round numbers. Just to provide clarity.
Okay. All right. I think those are my fundamental questions. It's completion of Founders Row 1 in a, in an acceptable way. VCs, which don't reduce the school capital costs and the park and other library contributions in order to bring the ADUs above the 6%. I'd be looking for the ADUs at 12% in addition to the traditional VCs that we've had. And if, if the developer wants to come forward and say that's not affordable, then I'd be interested in seeing all the data behind that. I have all the neighborhood issues, in fact, been addressed in a satisfactory manner. And then we've learned that the percentage of commercial to residential is 6 to 7% in Founders Row 2. These are all issues which I hope, and I firmly believe should be addressed before we move forward to boards and commissions, because they're fundamental, in my view, non-delegable ish, fundamentally financial and other issues which I believe are, are fundamental to council's decision-making. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks, Dave. Joe, the co-working space that you guys have in there, is that, is that included in your commercial calculation?
It is not.
And what's the size of that?
5,000.
Okay. I was looking through and I did see a note, and this was actually news to me. I didn't, I didn't realize this. Maybe it's a change since the last submission. But that co-working space is going to be available to non-residents in the community? Is that right?
Correct. I think that needs to be defined a little bit more. I'll be, I'll be honest, the way I had conceptualized it was that the conference spaces could be utilized by non-residents for city functions, whether they are boards, commissions, nonprofits, civic associations, et cetera, that there is an additional conference gathering space for it.
So it's just conference gathering space? I mean, do you have the ability for people to pay to drop down in like a hoteling-style workspace?
I think there is the opportunity for that and it needs to be explored a little bit further.
Okay. I think, I think that there's a real need for that, that type of thing in a smaller format in the right place in the city. And so if there is the ability to increase that co-working space, but also to program it so it operates as more true co-working, where you've got conference, but you also have the ability for folks to drop down and actually use it as a, as a shared office, I think would be just a really unique amenity, even though it's probably something that people would pay for. I think that's a, I think that would be a great community benefit. So I was actually happy to see that. And then just a couple other positive things before I get into some other stuff. It was nice to see you guys take some of the comments that we made and actually put those directly into practice as opposed to just comment, but not address them. And so specifically, I know some of the things I had asked for about moving the lobby, you guys did. So I, I appreciate that. The additional VCs being redirected to traffic calming and other walkability initiatives. And then seeing the new green space as well as the green roofs and then the commitment to lead gold, I think are all positive developments from the last time that you guys presented. And I did hear from some folks in the community about the walking tour as well as, I think I made a request for you guys to, to literally sit out there and measure out the setback of this building from Ellison Street so folks can visualize it. And my understanding is that that was fairly well received. And I'm sure that as other council members have pointed out, there may still be community concerns and neighborhood concerns out there. And I hope that you guys will continue to, to address those. A couple things that I would like to see are boards and commissions and others dig into. The cornice lines, and not to nitpick, but the cornice lines on the Ellison Street side and the tallest segment or the, the tallest section of, of the building, I think is something that our architectural advisory board will probably want to comment on. Because I know they took issue with it when I was liaison on Founders Row 1. I think it just looks a little monolithic on the gray paneling up top. But I do understand that as these things work themselves through boards and commissions, the design elements can change. But I did just want to put that, that marker down. I think that we could probably do something with the design on the Ellison Street side, at least for the further setback sections. And then finally, I do want to point out, as it relates to our stormwater discussion, you know, this is, this is an example of, you know, roof, well, I should say, updating an area that has otherwise been incredibly inefficient from a stormwater perspective. That's just, it's just a massive impervious site over there right now that just dumps water into those neighborhoods. And so the commitment to the stormwater retention, I think, is, is, is certainly a positive. But I would also like to see if there's a way for us to increase that stormwater treatment even further, whether it's through the buyer retention or the actual retention facilities themselves, as well as some additional landscaping. But all in all, I appreciate that, you know, the direct inclusion of some of the comments and requests that we made. I think that there's still some areas for improvement. But as I've said, as it relates to this conversation of residential and commercial, I, I think that it's not a hard and fast number that we need to remain committed to because not every residential project or not every development in the city needs to be jam-packed with a certain type of, of asset use. We need, we need bodies to support the retail and the restaurants. And assuming you guys are able to pull off this, these world-class restaurants or who are highly sought-after restaurants, we need bodies to support those. And so I look at this as a, an adaptive reuse of a very underutilized site. But we still have some ways to go, but I do appreciate the, the efforts and the evolution on this project to date. So thank you, guys.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Ross actually took my comments out of my mouth. So just really quickly, I appreciate, Joe, your update on Founders Row 1. I think we're all very interested, obviously, in the success of that project. And I think, as Ross just mentioned, having the success of that, I think, obviously depends on having residents and feet on the ground. And so I'm also not too concerned about a residential or commercial ratio. I think the number I actually look at is the net fiscal impact is actually per acre. And I think in the staff analysis, this was around 210,000 per acre, if I recall correctly. And I think what we're seeing on average is maybe about closer to 240. So close to kind of the average. Obviously, we'd love to go that, for that to go up. But for me, I think, I don't tie that to a commercial percentage. I care about at the end of the day whether this is good for the city. And so on that point, to circle back to the mayor's comment at the beginning, I too am interested in our city staff analysis on the total value of the package of VCs. I think it's certainly a worthy and important policy debate for us to have among council on whether that package of VCs should be allocated to affordable housing, which I think everyone knows I'm particularly passionate about. But also likewise, whether it needs to go to parks or libraries, or whether we've made enough capital investments there. But so why, I look forward to getting that, because I think that is an important part of the conversation. So definitely some ways to go, but I am comfortable at this point seeing continued progress here and comfortable getting this in front of boards and commissions soon. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Conley?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I keep turning off my camera because I keep getting kicked off. So if I freeze, just pass on to the next person. So, Joe, thanks for this presentation and Paul, thanks for what you've had to say. I do agree with a lot of what my colleagues had to say so far. One concern that I continue to have is just the timing piece. Is that, yeah, it would be nice if we could parallel-track the approval of Founders Row 2 with the opening of Founders Row 1. But that doesn't give us enough time to assess whether Founders Row 1 is working. And we want it to work. And every single mixed-use project we open up, we want to work. And, and I am a firm believer in not putting the brakes on anything. I feel like we just need to keep on moving forward on things. But I feel like the, this is putting the city council in kind of a tight position here that we need to be going forward with Founders Row 2 before we actually have any solid results on Founders Row 1. So that, that is my primary concern, is a timing concern. And I know that it takes, you know, the, the calendar that Paul showed us says final approval would not come till April and then we'll have a much better sense of how Founders Row 1 is working. But that timing concern and the public's understanding of that is my, my biggest concern here. And then can you just, my other question is, can you go back to the picture that has the green roofs?
Believe that's slide seven, yeah.
So you mentioned 2,000 square feet of green roof, so that's those two little green squares?
Correct.
So what's the rest of the building?
So that, that's, that's, so those are interior, it's actually very similar to the open courtyard if you are on, at the intersection of Weston Grove on Phase 1. There's an open courtyard that has green roof on it as well. It's essentially having two of those. So then on the roof is the, and then that, that's at the, you know, the second floor podium and that's open to the sky. And then you have the roof on the other areas of the building, just regular roof, mechanical equipment and, and whatnot.
Okay, that just seems kind of tiny to tout as green roof. But I mean, 2,000 square feet is better than none, but all green roof is better than, or half green roof. So that's just another question about that. Maybe I don't understand how, you know, green roofs work in that regard. But it would seem that it could be more than just two little squares. Thanks.
All right, anyone else have any comments? If not, I'm going to make a few myself. One, I do think it's very important to see the, the VC calculations that Mr. Shields has referenced. What I don't want to do is pretend we're doing so much more because we inflate one number, but at the expense of another so that we have a great affordable housing percentage and yet we deprive the schools of their capital contributions or other things. So to me, that's very important. I also don't want to set precedent that, you know, each project we sort as multi-variable analysis. We have to figure out, you know, where the money's coming from and going. I just think we need to have sort of a basic understanding of the voluntary concessions that are being offered. Secondly, I think it's extremely important, the commercial percentage and the commercial component of the, of each building that goes in the city for a number of reasons. One, our tax base is heavily skewed towards our residents. When we put up apartment buildings that are essentially entirely residential, we just, we just add to that. We need, in my opinion, need to have a mixed tax base and work towards a balance of 50-50 tax base, some, like many of our successful neighbors like Arlington County. Secondly, the numbers we see for brand-new buildings, the demographics change. You know, when a building's brand-new, it has a different skew of kids than a 30-year-old building does. And so I think we need to consider that as well, that the cost, the, the benefits or net positive impact will change over time. We haven't, as a city, done much analysis of that. But I think the bill, some of our buildings that have the, have a heaviest school population are older buildings. And so I think that's something to consider as well, is not just take a snapshot in time on day one and say, well, that's great, because it's going to change likely over time. Secondly, I would say when we start Secondly, I would say, when we start approving buildings in commercial districts that have no commercial component, a very limited commercial component, it's going to be very difficult to insist that another building provide some other benefit we want, the Whole Foods we want. Well, the developer there will tell you, I can't do it, for the same reason Founders Row couldn't do it. It's just not the right location, transportation's awkward, the parking plan doesn't work, the garage doesn't work effectively or efficiently. And so to my mind, in our commercial, our main commercial corridors, we ought to insist on a significant commercial component, just as we did in Founders Row One across the street with a movie theater, which I'm sure is a lost leader for the developer, but nonetheless, they agreed to it because they want to have a lot of apartments. And that's sort of the way things have worked here in the city, that developers hold their nose and they have commercial components that the city wants, like a Harris Teeter, like a Whole Foods, like a Target, that bring people into the city, that provide consistent tax revenue over time, and provide community benefits for community amenities for our city, so people can stay in the city to shop as well. So I don't see that yet here. I appreciate that, Mr. Muffler, you've been accommodating and wanting to work with us, and sound like you continue to want to do so. To my mind, I'd like to see a much stronger commercial component. The Harris Teeter project, which was a little bit larger as far as square footage, but had a 60,000-square-foot Harris Teeter in a building that probably was, you know, 10% bigger as far as apartments go. Right now, you're at 15,000 square feet, and some of the retail seems frankly, weak is probably not the right word, but just not vibrant tax-generating retail. I know you've got 5,000 square feet or thereabouts, a restaurant, but I'd certainly like to see the commercial component substantially increased. I am concerned of Founders Row. It sounds like you've got about 13,000 feet, square feet, signed, you know, not even yet penciled in through a letter of intent, which is not a lease. And that sounds like it's about a quarter of the total non-movie theater space, but yet we're going to have the building fully occupied with residents, I presume, in the very, very near future. So I just want to make sure, at the end of the day, you know, we all kind of get what we're expecting to get, and I know apartments are what you guys, probably your bread and butter, but for us, having a movie theater is something that really is attractive to our community, and the other spaces as well, create, help create a lively downtown, a vibrant downtown, that I think an apartment building in and of itself does not do. So I'm going to be looking for a stronger commercial presence in particular, and I want to see how those VCs pencil out. So anyway, that's sort of about all I've got to say. I do appreciate you coming back, and I know you've been working hard and will continue to do so. So we look forward to further conversations with you. And unless anyone has anything else, we do have a closed session tonight we still have to do. So with that, maybe, Mr. Muffler, I'll thank you again for all your fine work, and staff as well, and we'll continue this conversation in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
You, too. So let's move on now. We do have a closed session coming up here shortly, but let's get on first to any standing or regional committees. Anyone have any council liaison reports or the things they'd like to report? Okay, how about any just general council comments? All right, so why don't we take a short break and go into closed session? Let's say in, at 10:40, which is six or seven minutes from now, we'll go into closed session. Before we do that, I'm going to read the motion, and then we can go ahead and go into closed session, and then close down the cameras, have our closed session, and open back up and come out after closed session. So I'm going to go ahead and read a motion now.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, you have the new motion form, correct? Thank you, sorry.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
All right, upon a motion made by council member...
Hiscott.
Who's that?
Hiscott and Snyder.
Seconded by council member...
Snyder.
Snyder, and passed by a vote of city council. Council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, parentheses, a legal matter regarding potential liability, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body disposition of Virginia Village property. Vice Mayor Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter?
Yep.
All right, so let's go back into closed session in five minutes if we can, at 10:40. Thank you.
And Celeste will be taking care of setting up the meeting rooms and moving you over
All right, coming out of closed session, we thank you for your patience. We're going to start with a motion to formally come out of closed session, followed by certification. I'm going to read the first motion, a motion made by council member...
Snyder.
Snyder, and seconded by council member...
Hiscott.
Hiscott, and passed by a vote of city council. Council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter?
Yep.
This is our certification, the time is 11:50. Upon a motion made by council member...
Hardy.
Hardy, and seconded by council member...
Hiscott.
Hiscott, and passed upon affirmative roll call vote, an open session it was, certified that only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilmember Conley?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Carter?
Yep.
All right, so we are near the end of our meeting, I hope. Is there anything, any final words anyone wants to say before we leave?
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, council.
We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.